I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, May 10th, 2016. Laura, could you please call the roll?
Belvall.
Here.
Benford.
Here.
Fuqua.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
And to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everybody. We just came from a wonderful reception that we'll talk about a little, and we're glad to see you all here this evening. We will begin, as always, with the report from our superintendent, Dr. Messenger. Hello.
Good evening. President Fuqua, members of the Board of Education and those in attendance, welcome. It's great to have you here this evening. A few items I'd like to update you on. Last Friday afternoon, we had a groundbreaking ceremony at Douglas Elementary School for the construction of the new school there. Many students, staff, and community involved, so a fun event. And on May 25th, we have scheduled groundbreaking at Emerald Elementary School, and we'll keep you informed of these. And I believe it's Monday, June 6th, if I have the right day of the month, we'll have a groundbreaking and a kind of a community gathering at Erie. And we've reached out to the city to ask them to participate with us in that. So we'll keep you posted. It's an exciting time as we break ground and start construction schools. And as I've mentioned before, things are getting torn up and moved around, and a lot of work going on this summer in many sites as a part of our construction work on the bond issue and making very good progress on all fronts. You'll have an update from the Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee later this evening on many of the good projects going on. So one of the things I wanted to mention to you is that we'll have a legislative report later this evening, but a piece of legislation that made it through both houses and awaits the governor's signature is a Debt-Free Schools Act. And it is a piece of legislation that we've actually worked on versions of it for a half a dozen years, and we're pleased that it is, appears to be, on its way to becoming law in Colorado. And what the Debt-Free Schools Act will allow school districts to do is to go to their voters and seek levy, permission to tax under a levy that could offset costs associated with maintenance, custodial, security, and technology. And so this is a piece of legislation, like I mentioned, back in Amendment 66, we had worked on language there. And so it is an opportunity for school districts to gain community support for those services. One advantage of that would be is some of those services that are underfunded in our district and every district, we could add funds to that. That would be an advantage. The other thing it would allow us to do is to move funds in the general fund that fund those services into this new fund, and that would free up dollars in the general fund for instructional services, teaching and learning kinds of things. Those instructional services cannot go into this new levy, but it would create some breathing room in our general fund because we are, as you know, at that maximum level. So that's a big budget discussion. But the reason I bring it up this evening is at noon today, when I met with the leadership of the board and our team, we talked about going to our community and doing some polling this spring, really to explore their interests, their appetite, to look at a potential levy in this domain, and see what their interest would be in that, and begin to help them understand the opportunity that exists with this. So we met with Bob Drake earlier this week. Bob, as you know, has done polling for many years for us, and we are exploring this feasibility. Mr. Drake indicated that he could do that. His time is limited, and he has other clients that have demands on his time, but he, if we notified him this week, he would be interested in doing that work for us. Again, he's done a number of polls for us in the past. The other two potential levies, and so we'd probably weave the questions into this as well. We could issue and work on a transportation levy that's allowable under Colorado statute, and we have $4 million annually. We spend out of the general fund for transportation services in combination with our existing transportation levy, and also some state reimbursement. So again, if we were to pass a transportation levy that would pick up that cost, then we could move that $4 million of expense out of the general fund, and that would free up dollars for other services for students. And then the third area I want to mention is full-day kindergarten. We have, in Colorado, the ability to go to our taxpayers and ask for the funds to pay the operational cost of full-day kindergarten if they supported that, if they were so inclined. So those are really the three large areas that we believe could be tapped into sometime in the future. Some give relief to the general fund, some give some combination of that, and also services that we might want. Just with regard to the full-day kindergarten, I would just mention, as you know, as a result of this bond work, when the bond work is completed, we'll have the capacity to offer full-day kindergarten, physical capacity, in every one of our schools or elementary schools that does not obviously pay for the cost of staff. And so this levy would allow us to do that. So our interest in that, we had supported the leadership of the board, they asked that I bring it forward this evening to see if there were questions or comments on it. See if there are questions about that. We would contract with Bob Drake's firm to do the polling, anticipate. We'd have a results of that, a report back to you in August after our July break in a timely manner, so that if the board wanted to proceed to some form of election, levy election, as soon as November of 2016, we're on a timeline that would allow for that. Now, we might have the polling results, and you decide not to do that, or decide to time it differently. But anyway, I just wanted you to be aware that those are options. Some members of the board had asked that we'd at least explore this, and I wanted to bring it before the full board. So let me pause there and see if there are questions. A few other items I want to mention, Sam, but President Fuqua, but if there are questions, I'd answer those, so we don't lose track of that.
Board members, questions about this idea of polling the community on some of these options that Dr. Messenger has presented? Any questions for the superintendent? Kathy?
Thanks, Dr. Messenger. I don't have a question about the polling, but more about, I think it's an interesting title, the debt-free schools, so we can take on more debt?
Yeah, and I can explain the reason for the title.
Okay, but anyway, so how much, is there a cap on that?
There is not a cap, as long as it's used for the right, for the designated purposes. We've done an estimate that our capacity, what, if we moved all of those costs into such a fund, and we wouldn't have to do that, but if we did, it would be upwards of $30 million, which, so a little less than 10% of our total general operating fund could be moved over, transported over into this new levy, and in combination of probably expanding some of those services, because some of those that I mentioned are probably underfunded also. So, but, yeah, and there's not a limit on the amount, as long as it's appropriate use, and there's not a term limit on, it's a perpetual or permanent fund that would continue.
And is it somehow indexed to, so as those costs go up, the fund would go up and the mills would go up?
It isn't designed in the legislation. We've asked for legal review of this. We would be interested in imposing it in a way that it would give us that flexibility, as opposed to a set dollar amount. So it might be tied to at least millage, so that as the assessed value would increase, it might not keep up with the costs of living or inflation. But our interest would be at least to consider that option, so that we wouldn't, that it could grow with our expenses as they grow.
So it'd be tied to AV and not total program?
If we did it under a levy, yes. That's what, I mean, that's AW. And again, there wouldn't be any reason the board couldn't limit the amount. There wouldn't be any reason the board in the ballot question couldn't limit the term either. But there isn't that restriction built into the law.
And the polling would be on all three of the options, or?
We talked to Bob Drake about this, and we'd probably start with the debt-free schools piece, because it is probably the one that gives us the most capacity and gives us the greatest flexibility. But in a secondary set of questions to go to the others, in part to see, you know, if there's different levels of interest and/or the amount and the use. So it's a bit complicated. He's pretty good. He's pretty confident he can do it. But, and again, even if we didn't exercise an option as soon as November 16th, it would probably give us helpful data, as we might make future decisions. I mean, what we know is, and I'll just say it for the public, because you know this, is that there isn't any indication in the short term that there's going to be an increase in revenue that's going to match the needs of our school district. And so, or any other school district in the state of Colorado. But when we focus on our needs, this has potential to give us some flexibility for some programs and services we talk about frequently that we haven't been able to fund. So, but the first issue really is just around the polling, and then obviously a bigger discussion in August if we, when we see the results.
And the polling, can it ferret out the fact that there's going to be a very crowded ballot with a lot of hands out and complicated issues where, for example, the debruising, which isn't a tax increase but will be billed as a tax increase, and the minimum wage and others, so he can kind of, I'm assuming that he can ferret all of that out?
Well, we talked to Bob Drake about that very issue, and also what else is going on in Boulder County. Does a lot of polling across Boulder County, so he has a pretty good sense of what else will be on the ballot. So yes, and we also understand through our partners across the state, this same issue around, multiple questions around education being on ballots. Many of our peer districts and partner neighbors are asking both for levy overrides and bond issues. So some of the planning, I would say, and strategizing around that fall question on the ballot, will take this into consideration. And obviously, we would work, if we proceed, in partnership with organizations, so we use best strategies. But yeah, it will be busy and complicated.
And was there any language, since one of the hot issues at the legislature was around sharing the revenues with the charter schools, I mean, is there any language in that about how it would be shared, or what does that look like, or is it even on the table?
Not addressed in that, in this legislation. I think that, you know, we have our own practices and policy in this district, and we'll talk a bit more in legislative updates to where that's at with state legislation, but not specific in this legislation to charters.
Other questions or comments on this topic, board members? Shelley?
So Bruce, if you had to just ask the question that the pollers might be asking, what would it look like? I'm still not clear, like, what we're actually asking.
Well, I think one of the obvious questions is what their interest would be in addressing a tax increase, again, given what we asked in 2014, and also increased valuations in this last tax year, or present tax year, I guess. So I think part of it is their interest or appetite to do that, one question. The other is, if yes, what would be their areas of interest for that, those expenditures to occur? As we know from polling in previous generations of polling, is that sometimes, well, frequently, it matters what it's going to be used for, and what the intent is. So what we've done in polling is to try to weave those together to say, I mean, what we found in the most recent polling with the bond is that the most favorable polling was around the largest bond package, and it was because of some of the things that came with that package, where the lesser ones were more about deferred maintenance and not some of the educational pieces. So what we found, and that's ultimately what happened in the election. So I think it's trying to identify the interest in it, Shelley, and also the kinds of things, if we were to go to the voters, that we would want to commit those dollars to, or at least, and again, that would, then that would get to ballot language and campaign and all of that. So, but I think our experience in working with Bob Drake in the past in his firm is that we wind up with pretty good data set that at least informs us, and, you know, probably causes us to make some of the decisions that we do, or helps us make the decisions.
So would we be suggesting areas of interest in this poll?
We would identify some areas of interest, yeah.
And do you have a sense of what those might be?
Well, in our conversation with Bob, and we could help shape this, are some of the very topics that have come from the board, in our budget planning, in our discussions, and also our strategic plan, which overlaps quite a bit. So, I mean, again, we wouldn't be committed to that. But, you know, we've talked about social-emotional learning, we've talked about early childhood, we've talked about the achievement gap or literacy interventions. So, you know, the list is probably long, so, but we won't make it too long, because that won't work at a poll.
Just a couple other questions. So we have a mill levy already for full-day K, right, in place?
We do not.
It ran out?
We've not had a mill levy for full-day K.
Had for early childhood.
Early childhood, correct.
Which full-day K is a part of.
We've not used it for that. We've used it for preschool.
Right, but the definition of that would include?
Yeah, the way we've used the $5 million that was a part of the last mill levy override in 2010 is used for early childhood, three- and four-year-olds. The funding of our full-day K and eight of our highest poverty schools comes from the general fund.
Other questions or comments on the topic?
I would just say personally, I'd be very interested in the data.
Okay, so we'll work with Bob. Bob has a pretty busy schedule, both personally and professionally this summer, so he said, "If you tell me this week, I can probably make it work." So we'll act with him and see about framing this up and keep you informed as we proceed, okay?
Did you have a question, Jenny?
No, no, I was just going to agree that I was supportive of getting the data as well.
Okay. If there's no other questions or comments on that topic, do you have other items to report to us on?
A few others, yes. I'll move quickly. They won't be that long.
Please continue.
So I just wanted to let the board know, we had a conversation recently about our work with University Hill Elementary School and New Vista High School, and also CU Boulder, the university, about potentially working on a shared planning process around facility construction and shared campus space. I just wanted to let you know that staff of the two schools and this office and the university are meeting in a facilitated session on Monday, May 16th, to just, we really have not taken the first step yet. So that'll be the first step, just to begin to explore this, and I'll keep you apprised of that. And what we've committed to both school communities is that we give them an update going into summer, just because it's been a while since we've talked with them in staff meetings, but we'll give the full community an update, just so going into summer, they kind of know. I mean, clearly, this will be just a foot in the door, in that there'll be much to follow, and we'll keep you informed with that. We met yesterday with representatives of the City of Boulder around municipalization. They requested a meeting to talk about where they are with the utility municipalization and get our insight and comment. We've had conversation with them over the years about this. Obviously, this is a topic of great interest and some conflict in our community, and we're, you know, a significant utility user across the county, not just in the City of Boulder, but it was an engaging conversation, and we appreciated them taking time to give us an update. Couple other things, I just wanted to let you know, some fun things that we've been doing. Last, a week ago Friday, we had a preschool nutrition media event at Sanchez Elementary. Laura De La Cruz welcomed us there, along with Ann Cooper and her team, and the YMCA and the Food Share, because we have started with the generous donation of Gordon Gam and financial contribution to provide food that goes home with families in need on the weekend with recipes and fresh products. And this has been a very successful program. Gordon's trying to get others to join in and give cash donations to help fund this, but Ann Cooper and all involved have been very supportive of this work, and we're excited about it. Just for the public, I think you know this, but we celebrated the retirement of a number of employees last Thursday evening. Thanks for those of you that could be there. It's always a fun celebration, good times with families and friends, and so, big time. We had it at the Omni again this year. We're moving to a new location next year. We'll keep you informed on that. This Thursday afternoon, Lori Shepherd, Dean Lori Shepherd, the dean of the College of Education for an extended period of time, and a longtime faculty member at CU College of Ed, is having a retirement reception. And Lori's been a friend of BVSD, continues to be. She'll stay on faculty. They have selected a new dean, of which we've been a part of, and so she'll be here in July and introduce her to our community and to our school community. But I just want to give public recognition to Lori Shepherd and her, not only her fine leadership at the College of Ed, but also her relationship with BVSD. The fondness she has for us, and she will continue to work with us in her faculty role going forward. This Saturday, some of you volunteered to come to the parity graduation, a parent education program. Dennis V. Hill leads in our community, and some of you have gone to his sessions. And they have a certificate and recognition this Saturday at Lafayette Elementary, I believe is the location. So if you're going to be there, we'll join you for that celebration. And also this Saturday, our Youth Leadership Institute students will gather at the university. This is the first year we've done this, where they can kind of showcase some of what they learned out of the institute, and they all had homework when they left the institute. And so this will be a chance for the students to kind of showcase, you know, their learning from that. And so we're doing this again in partnership with CU, and we're excited about that under Dr. Ron Cabrera's leadership. So with that, I will end my comments. I think I covered the waterfront. I'd be glad to address any other topics or any of those if there's interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Messenger. Appreciate your report. Additional questions or comments on other topics? Richard?
Just a quick question on the University Hill, New Vista, and CU. You made an initial presentation to the UniHill faculty and parents.
Correct.
About this whole change. What was the reaction that you got from them at that time?
I would say, Richard, in both cases, it was well-received, both New Vista and UniHill. I mean, and I know there's been much conversation since then. I mean, there's, you know, some attachment to the building itself. There's a lot of history, well, in both schools, and they both are unique schools because of their focus. And so, you know, I think there's some optimism and hope around the discussion. I also think, I know, that they want to be sure that we honor the integrity of their program. I think both are excited about, they both have partnerships with the university already, but enhancing those partnerships. So I'd say overall, on the positive side of the discussion, but some anticipation as well. I think they're anxious to see what potential next steps there would be, and then they probably would have more opinion. The reality is, there isn't much to react to yet, but we'll give them opportunity if we are able to proceed with this. And part of it's about money and finances, obviously, but also what could that partnership look like and what opportunity would it create, so?
Great. The reason I'm asking is because I did get, I was a telephone call from probably one of the most active parents at University Hill, and with some concerns.
Yeah.
And I need to reassure her that this is moving in the right direction.
Yeah, so we'll keep you informed as we, I mean, one of the elements in this is it would give us, if, well, if it all came together, the capacity to create a pre-K8 program, dual-language program there. We're also exploring that at Pioneer also, but, you know, we're just limited in our physical capacity to do that at UniHill presently. But that's, that was one of the positive elements that came up in the conversation.
The question that was, that came up is, is there going to be enough capacity if it's a pre-K8 dual-language immersion? Is the middle school experience, is that going to be open to other kids coming from other areas, or is it just going to be reserved for those kids that are from UniHill going into?
Yeah. Great conversation, the same conversation we've had at KC with, out of Columbine, and also that we're having out of Pioneer. You know, what we want to do, and it doesn't depend on this construction, but in the planning would be to create a pathway, an articulated plan, so students who are into a language that want to continue, that they have a place to go, because we're struggling with that a little bit right now. But certainly, I don't think if students come from other dual low-language programs in district or, you know, either other communities, I mean, a part of it, as you would guess, would be their readiness to do that. But, yeah, that's part of the conversation around just the program aspect of it as well.
Thanks.
Other questions, comments? Shelley?
I have a question about UniHill, too, Bruce.
Sure.
I'm getting some pushback that this process hasn't been open to the community, and that we keep saying that it's exploratory, but people are afraid it's gone beyond the exploratory phase, and they haven't had input.
Right.
So, and some people are asking me about this meeting on Monday, and I don't have any information about that meeting to know who is invited, or, you know, why they're not, or how they, when they will be involved, that how far down the road will this be before they're involved?
Sure.
So if you could provide me some insights, so I can tell them.
Yeah. So what I think you could feel comfortable sharing, the facilitator who has worked with the university in the past on other similar projects, is a consultant facilitator. We've not worked with him. I've now exchanged emails with him, and we'll have an interview with him on Thursday this week, I believe. We've developed this agenda, and so who will be there? It will be faculty representation from the two schools, the university, the district office here. I've invited the city. I've talked to Jane Brodigan, the city manager. I don't know today exactly where we are with city participation, but they have some interest in that. So really, staff level at this point, I think that part of the day, the agenda I've seen, is about starting this exploration together, but also to address this issue about community input, because clearly, there's a need to do that on the front end of the process. But we don't even have enough process yet to ask the question. So, you know, given that, excuse me, we're going into summer break, this is, you know, probably a little bit later than we had hoped to get started, my guess is we would mostly be setting the stage for conversations after the summer break. But there might be some research or some data collection that would occur to make that the most productive. Again, I don't want to commit to a process that I don't know about yet, because we haven't designed it, but I think there's interest to make it as open as possible, and not just for elected officials, but also for community neighbors, those who have a history with the programs, alumni, yeah. So, yeah, we'll, I'll know more, I think, after the 16th, and I will, I anticipate a report will be developed from that, just an update for all the entities involved.
You'll keep the board updated along the way.
Absolutely, yeah.
Other questions, comments?
Yeah, so I can tell them that part of this meeting on Monday will be to discuss how they will be involved going forward.
Yeah, just the process, yeah.
And I can assure them that we won't get too far down this road if there's a big outcry that people do not want this done. It's not a done deal, is what I?
Not a done deal.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think with that, we can conclude the superintendent report. Thank you, Dr. Messenger. Move to the next item on our agenda, the District Accountability Committee report. Natalie, welcome. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you all, too. Thank you for having me here. We have spent some time at the District Accountability Committee, taking a look at school privacy, school, student data privacy issues. And you, I think, have a handout in front of you with just a bit of an overview of our discussion. We had the benefit of Andrew Moore, who came, the benefit of Andrew Moore, who came and did a presentation to our group, and Rose Foster and his staff helped to support some small group discussion. Two meetings, the meeting before Andrew came to share a formal presentation, we talked a little bit about it generally, about student data privacy, and that there was Colorado state legislation, as well as local. And we generated a bunch of questions, and so we had an activity that pulled out some of the overarching themes, concerns, and questions, and did a small group after Andrew presented with more information, and came up with the following issues. These things are both good and areas of concern, things that we'd like for you to take into your next phase, as you build out this student data privacy policy, as our recommendations for your considerations. As it relates to transparency, and when we said transparency, this was a lot of vendor contracting, how they share data, stored data, how long data was kept, how the information of what data was shared and released was communicated to families and students. The DAC suggests that one of the things that would be very helpful moving forward is a frequently asked questions document about when actually is personal identifiable information shared and with whom. We encourage you all to think about a way to push that data policy out to parents versus just posting it somewhere, but actually sending it out, posting it on the parent portal of the website when it's put together. And also, one of the areas of concern brought up in terms of transparency was the specific chain of responsibility for managing data, for sharing data, and for recognizing if there is a breach, how is that handled? How is that information communicated to families? How was staff, students, and others made aware of that, and the implications of a breach? Regarding classroom applications, apps, that was another area that the group spent some time on, and this was really around, how do you manage all the different apps that our teachers and our para educators are using in the classrooms across the district? We recognize that there is going to be a vetting of apps, and folks wondered how we would be able to maintain an updated list with the frequency of folks using different and new applications. And really, we had this conversation that we wanted to encourage you to help us balance the security concerns and the real need for innovation and creativity in the classrooms. We recognize that many of the apps that teachers and paras use are around very funky, cool, creative, innovative practices in the classroom, and we certainly don't want to rob anyone of that, but certainly want to make sure that we have security in place. So the considerations that we ask as it relates to the apps is to continue that balance of student security and classroom innovation, to help teachers understand the risk, and again, create some sort of frequently asked question, or some sort of way to answer questions in a timely way for teachers and paras as you begin the process of vetting, and maybe establish some sort of criteria for them to do a quickie security check, to know before things are officially vetted if it's safe, what they might be able to look for, that once that approved app list is available, that it's shared with everyone, so parents can see it, too. We can also get a sense of what's being used. To help with a timeframe for how often those apps are reviewed, and make sure that the lists that are on the approved list continue to be secure, given that they're constantly being updated and changed, and to identify resources and strategies to continually update the benefits of using the different apps, and how folks can learn across schools, across the district, which apps are effective for what, as it relates to student success and- and academic retention. The last area that we talked about was policy implementation. So when we talk about this new student data policy, this concern, this area concerns how staff will be trained, how will they be trained to handle data insecurity as well, how often the training happens, the guidelines for those on the front line, and how, how that will be communicated. There was a question around who sets the expectations for district norms and practices as it relates to the implementation of the student data privacy policy, and how you will keep up to date with the ever-changing technology. So as it relates to policy implementation, some of the questions that we had, or some of the recommendations that we ask you to consider, are to offer guidelines for teachers and training on criteria and security considerations. And we ask that you have ongoing boosters. It's, you know, a big training at a one-shot is hard to retain over time. Eighteen months later, you might have a whole lot of different staff. And we ask that you have an overview training, but encourage boosters to be offered at the different school levels so that staff are constantly being updated around not only policy, but any red flags and tracking issues that are found. Promote consistency in the training and the messaging across the district, across staff. Establish a policy with regard to student pictures and videos. That area did not seem to be clear to us in terms of sharing. Identify opportunities for staff and teachers who are tech uncomfortable to get on board. Not everyone is very comfortable with tech 101, and certainly using apps and then using an application or some sort of program and not having a good sense of how to look for security 101. It would be helpful to get a sense, to help them feel more comfortable, and to clearly communicate the process. If the policy is not followed, what's the accountability structure? So we roll out the training and we have an expectation that folks follow a vetting and don't use unapproved apps and this, that, and the other thing. And then what happens if, in fact, that doesn't get followed up on at a school level, at an individual level? What's the accountability for that and how is that handled? I would be happy to take any questions that you have about our process or about some of the recommendations that we suggested, and it was, it was great digging through this for you.
We appreciate it, as always thoughtful input from the DAC. Thank you.
Sure.
Board members, questions or comments? Tina?
Yeah, thank you so much for this, and there are so many things that are really, I think, helpful. And I just wanted to highlight one of them is this idea of pushing out policy when we change it. I think that might even be a practice for all policy, and just to make, because our, the way we communicate policy changes is entirely passive, and I think that's a really good, that policies that are very specific to students or student data, things like that should be proactively communicated with the community, not as an as-needed basis. And I really appreciate that comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? Kathy?
I just appreciate the term "tech uncomfortable." Hadn't heard that before.
You like that? Tech uncomfortable?
And I just want to thank you. I came to the first part of-
The opposite of tech savvy?
Yeah. And for certain generations, it actually fits a little bit.
Right, sure.
I like that, as opposed to not knowing tech, I'm just tech uncomfortable. So anyway, and I was at the DAC meeting for part of it, and I just wanted to say thank you for all your amazing work and how well you dove into these issues, and these recommendations are really, really helpful. So I really appreciate it, so thank you.
Great, thanks.
Jenny?
So I'd also like to thank you for the work. I relied heavily on, on your comments and the thoughtful discussion that you gave because, I mean, I think the group thinking in this case is bound to be really helpful. I particularly liked the idea of an F, frequently asked questions document. I think that's great. And sort of the idea of balancing security and innovation and trying to, that's always going to be tricky, but trying to come out at the right place that's best for our students. And I, you probably can't answer this because it's a question you raised, but I thought we had a policy about picture, taking pictures of students. Isn't there some release that we usually require? Is that what you were thinking about, was students signing a release, or was there something else you were talking about?
Our discussion centered around a recognition that there, there were many times that the district shared student information that, to some degree, was unbeknownst to parents. And, and you could Google your kid and find different things, and someone did and found pictures that they had done for a class or a video presentation that was posted beyond just the student Google site.
Okay.
And so the question came up, if there are things that, whether it's student-created videos or videos that students were in from a classroom or some sort of built school presentation, is there a policy around that? Many of the families did not, in the room, did not have clarity on where that was and if that would be part of this bigger picture.
Okay, okay. And would it be, or would that, I mean, I guess we can talk about that when we discuss the policy later on. Okay, thank you. That's a good question.
Hi Natalie.
Hi Shelley.
Thank you so much for, for this work. There's some really helpful recommendations in here, I think. It, it doesn't seem like if you had one meeting and then another meeting where you had a presentation from the district, that you probably had the chance to go back to the SACs to talk about any of this. Is that a correct assumption?
You know, what we did for this one is, the first meeting that we had was, we're going to be talking about this next, at the next meeting, and Andrew Moore is coming from the district. So if you have a SAC meeting between this and that, ask your SAC members if there are specific concerns that they have around student data, data privacy, and that's how we brought it into the following meeting in the small group discussion. It wasn't a formal discussion or survey. It was, if you have a SAC meeting, please vet this and get some high-level questions or pull out some themes from a discussion that your SAC might have, bring it into the DAC and bring it into this small group discussion.
And do you, do you have a sense of how many people were able to do that?
I don't.
Okay. And so you had one, one meeting where you sort of discussed this generally, and then you had another meeting where the district presented, and I assume there was some conversation after the presentation?
That was a, the small groups that got us to these bullets.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, did the entire DAC get to see this report before it came to the board?
The DAC, did the DAC see the report? Yes, thank you.
They did?
Yeah.
Okay. And so you got feedback that this was representative of the DAC?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You got it.
Richard?
Making people nervous in the back, Richard.
Thank you very much, Natalie. Great work here. And thank you Kathy for covering for me that evening because-
We missed you, Richard, but it was great having you, Kathy.
Yeah, I was stuck someplace else, but thanks a lot. When you were talking about the approved app list for all stakeholders to access, did you, did you guys come up with any kind of examples of what that would look like?
Andrew shared with us that there would be some sort of listing once apps were vetted so that teachers were, teachers and paras and anyone who is using X app, apps for classroom use, it would be easily accessible, whether it's via website or somewhere, so that they would know, here's what's approved, here's what's not approved. That's as far as we got in terms of the list. I think what we talked about was transparency, once that list was created, for not only teachers and paras, but for parents and others to be able to also access that list.
Thanks.
I forgot to ask, one of the, I think the first time we looked at this policy, the, there's a section that says that a teacher could select an app if they do the security thing, which is not necessarily in conflict, but somehow relates to a policy we have IJ, which is on the selection of learning materials. Did you talk about that at all? Or, I, I know that we haven't put those two policies together, but did you touch on whether that should be, apps should be exempted as a learning material at all, or?
We did not.
Okay, all right. I was just wondering if that came up. Thank you.
Anything else, board members, on this topic, the DAC? If not, thank you again for all your work on this.
Thank you. It has been a pleasure serving on exec, and I would share to you, if I could, for thirty more seconds, maybe at the end of this year, you could share with DAC if there are two or three areas that you know it's coming out, whether it's CASL or whatever else it is, to charge DAC fairly early in the year to dig in, because they'd love to, and just give us a heads up. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
We'll communicate that to our DAC reps. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Or liaisons, Richard and Kathy, right? All right, well, next on our agenda is the public hearing and public participation. The board recognizes the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the board, please confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks, therefore, should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. The board president may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. Here is the lighting system on the podium. It starts at green when your two minutes begins, turns yellow when you have thirty seconds remaining, and turns red at the end. When the light turns red, please wrap up your comments so that the board can hear from the maximum number of speakers. We have a couple of speakers on agenda items. We'll take those first, and then a few speakers on non-agenda items. Our agenda item speakers are Bob Belknap and Elizabeth Clark, and my understanding is Ms. Clark has given her two minutes to Mr. Belknap. So, Mr. Belknap, if you're here, you have four minutes. And welcome. Good to see you.
Thank you. Actually, I have Rachel here.
What's that?
I have Rachel, my other daughter.
Oh, hey.
Elizabeth Bale.
Okay. So Rachel has given you the two minutes.
So, correct. So I didn't know Natalie was going to speak before me, so it scrambled my thoughts a little bit. I'll try to be brief.
See how I am.
So I have two daughters, LMS, sixth grade and eighth grade, and I'm on the SAC there. I'm also on the DAC. But I want, and we have spent two meetings talking about the subject of data privacy. So I want to be clear with you, I'm not here to speak for the DAC or the SAC or the school or anyone else. I'm just here speaking for Bob Belknap. I have a, one specific issue with this data privacy policy that is important to me and I'm concerned about. And it relates to the release of student academic data with personally identifiable information. That's all I want to bring attention to tonight is I object to my kids' academic data getting released in a way that can identify it as attached to them. We spent a lot of time at the last meeting, at the last DAC, talking about this. Andrew was there. Natalie reviewed it pretty, pretty darn well, so I'll just point to a couple of things at that meeting. And one is, Andrew mentioned specifically a program, a popular high school program called Naviance. And Andrew said, and if I misquote you, you can correct me, Andrew, but Andrew said that that program's allowed to sell student data, and that that's one way the district is able to afford it, that they market data that they collect. That made me concerned and worried and wondering about what other ways is data about students getting out of the school district. So the discussion ended in DAC after, it was a pretty lively discussion, and it did not favor my view on not releasing data with personally identifiable information. Got tabled for the rest of the year, so we will probably come back to the subject again next year. In fact, we agreed we would before we left. The district, in my opinion, including myself, parents, educators, teachers, are learning to deal with an, appears to me as a parent, an onslaught of technology in the classroom. Sometimes it looks helpful, sometimes it looks confusing, oftentimes difficult for a parent to figure out how to adopt all the technology. But one thing about it, in my opinion, is it's a blessing and a curse. And as we see its use grow more and more and more data is getting collected on these kids, and it's being stored in more and more and more places, and it's a vulnerable environment. I say that the hackers' ability to hack us has exceeded our ability to stop them. My evidence for that is twice a year, my visa gets canceled, most recently by Home Depot. Understand the law progressing through the Colorado process specifically allows the release of student data with personally identifiable information. I saw a draft of the law. I read that statement. If it's changed, I apologize. That's what I read. That's what I understand. I think that's a mistake. I think Naviance is an example, who is selling student data. I imagine that other applications are releasing it in some way or another. Other applications will gain access to information, and the school will release information on purpose to organizations for research. I know we do that. I'm sure there are good reasons for doing that. I believe over time that what's going to happen is this data is going to become public domain. And I wasn't aware of Natalie's comments, but she said, in fact, it already is. I think in five or 10 years, you're going to be able to Google your, Google your kid, and you're going to be able to find stuff out about them that does not belong there. So I don't know, Brad, I'm done. This is my daughter Rachel. She's 12. She's one of 31,000 kids here, and it's a 31,000 times her size problem. So I urge the board, when you consider this policy, to really think about not releasing data that can be attached to her and her future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Belknap. Thank you, Rachel. We'll move now to our speakers on non-agenda items. The first of those is Karen Goldblum. Ms. Goldblum, are you here? Oh, welcome. Good evening. Come on up.
Hi, thank you for having me here. Going to try to keep this short. And what I'll be talking in a little bit is about basic training for early ed educators for dyslexia. So I would like to request that all early ed teachers have some basic training in the early signs of dyslexia. When my son was in kindergarten, I knew that something was wrong. Although he always loved to have books read to him, he became very agitated whenever I asked him to identify a letter or a sound. I asked his teacher what she thought was wrong, and she just said that kids learn at different paces. Halfway through the year, she acknowledged that he did have a problem and requested reading intervention. It didn't seem to help very much. I asked his teacher and the literacy specialist if it was possible that he had dyslexia. She said, they both said no. The next two and a half years were the most challenging that I have ever had. Every day, it was a struggle to get my son to go to school. He was sick all the time. He begged me not to make him go to school, and he hid in the bathroom at school crying. It was a horrible experience. Finally, despite everyone at the school telling me that he had no sign of dyslexia, I had him tested. And of course, he was dyslexic. If only they had some training in how to identify the early signs, it could have prevented two and a half years of struggle and of my son not being taught in a way that he can learn. I would like to request that all early ed teachers receive some form of basic training to identify early signs of dyslexia so that no other families have to endure what we did, and so that kids can begin getting help as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ryan Kirkpatrick. Good evening.
Good evening. How you guys doing? You guys aren't nearly as excited as I am. Go. I'm the parent of a dyslexic student, and you have heard his story, and many like it before. Instead of detailing his struggles and those of other dyslexic students in Boulder Valley, I'm here tonight to speak to you about an opportunity to partner with the extraordinary members of our community within this district and best find a way to utilize all of our resources. With the recent passing of the REED Act by Congress and with many states passing their own dyslexia screening and intervention laws, it is not a question of if BVSD will have to confront this learning difference, but when. I understand the interventions for children with dyslexia will come at a cost, and that the district is currently teaching, training teachers in the Barton system and offering a pilot program at my child's school. I applaud the early efforts, but your sense of urgency in dealing with this issue and the politics surrounding it do not help enough children now. In reading your mission statement, "The Success Effect," your number one goal is to partner with students- your number one goal is to partner with students, families, and the community to address the unique learning needs of students. Again, this is your number one goal. In keeping with that goal and the theme of the mission statement, I want to steal a line from Jerry Maguire. Help me help you. Help me help you. For the past two years, a volunteer tutor has delivered the Barton Reading and Spelling System to my child several times a week during his literacy block. And he has realized dramatic improvement in several key areas of the I-Ready test. This is a perfect example of partnering with the community and thinking outside the box at no cost to the district. The disappointing thing is that we are told that this volunteer can no longer gift her services to the school in this capacity. We, as parents, realize that the school district cannot solve this problem overnight, and we definitely cannot tackle it without active community engagement. We all want what is best for the students of this district. Help us achieve that goal by staying true to your mission statement and partnering with the community. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Our next speaker is Karen Trout, who I believe has been given an additional two minutes by Kate Snedeker. Is that correct? Oh, the weatherway part, apologize for that. Ms. Snedeker, you have four minutes, because Ms. Trout has given you her two minutes. And welcome.
I'm Kate Snedeker. I am a junior at Fairview High School. I was diagnosed with dyslexia in sixth grade. It's debilitating dyslexia, so it is a very severe form of dyslexia. And I was given my five-four accommodations, and throughout middle school, there was no literacy, literary device that's, devices set up for me to, to help me, not only because I did have a late diagnosis to help me succeed, but through, I was only entered the BVSD program in fourth grade, but neither my fourth or fifth grade teachers did diagnose me with dyslexia, and I did have a very severe form with it. So according to my, the person who diagnosed me, it was, they should have been able to detect it. And so I do think that it is extremely important to have kindergarten through eighth grade screening, and just to, just for warning signs. That's all we need. And then to have literary systems set up to help these students, because it is so, especially in, even in third grade, it is extremely helpful if you could just take a couple of minutes with a student every day and say, hey, you don't learn the normal way. That's fine. That's who you are. You can learn this way. This is a way that will help you learn. And then another very important thing that I think does need to be brought up is to teach teachers how to not only diagnose for, just even like try to find warning signs for dyslexia, but also what dyslexia is, because, you know, my freshman year of high school, I came in. I had been dealing with dyslexia my whole life. I was like, okay, I need to take verbal tests. I need to have extra time on my tests. I need to speak out my answers, because my verbal comprehension is at a ninety, in sixth grade, was at a ninety percentile, which was the seniors in high schools, but my written comprehension was at a, was at a third grade level. And so I told my teachers this is what I need. A lot of them were like, okay, that's, we don't really, okay, like, that's fine. I remember I did have a math teacher who said, oh, you're too smart to have dyslexia, which is, anyone who knows dyslexia, that's a very ridiculous statement, because dyslexia and intelligence are, have no correlation to each other. And so I think that it's very important to, to have teachers not only be able to screen for warning signs for dyslexia, but also understand just what dyslexia is and how to help, how to listen to students who just say, who, because most of the students who have dyslexia, they know what, they know what they need, because we've been dealing with it. And so to help, to have, just let us help, you know, saying like, we, we need this, and we need you to be receptive for this. Even just a workshop would be fabulous, just to teach teachers, you know, dyslexia impacts most students at a literary level, in which it just takes longer to read. It's not, not because we don't understand material, and it's not because we are unable to process material. It's just that we do it differently than the norm, so that makes it the abnormal. And so I would just like to reinforce the importance of having teachers understand what dyslexia is, the K through eight screening, and the literacy programs that are set up throughout K through twelve to help students with dyslexia not only realize their potential to succeed, but also how, but also to succeed in their own way that is aside from the norm, but that's okay, because this is what we need. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our final public participation speaker this evening is Kristin Bjornson. Ms. Bjornson, are you here? Coming with the team.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I'm sorry, I had some printouts that I didn't have a chance to bring, but I'll email them. At the last board meeting, Julia and I spoke about the proposal to change the Twin Lakes Field from public to mixed-density residential, and how this was a very big change and was inconsistent with the neighborhood character. This clash is more than just a cerebral idea. It has very real policy, very real ramifications. The one I'll talk about today is the traffic impact. Only one road accesses the Twin Lakes Field. It's a single-lane windy road, the Twin Lakes Road. According to county data, the Twin Lakes Road saw twenty-two hundred vehicles per day in 2012. If the field land use designations are changed to mixed-density residential, this would allow up to three hundred and sixty dwelling units on the field, which would entail an estimated eight hundred and eight additional cars. Traffic would potentially increase by seventy-four percent on this one road, with three thou, with more than three thousand eight hundred more vehicles, or three hundred, with a total of more than thirty-eight hundred vehicles per day. This would be in a low-density residential neighborhood, one with many children, and on a road notorious for its speeding drivers and blind curves. The curve just before the field is almost ninety-degree turn, and this is what I was going to bring a map of. It's a blind turn that goes right to the field, and this is a dangerous situation that we should avoid. And I urge you to recommend against this MXR request. Thank you for the time to speak.
Thank you. Aren't board meetings fun, kids? And that concludes the public hearing and public participation. Thanks to everybody who spoke this evening. We'll move now to the next item on our agenda, which is board communication. Board members. Richard.
Thanks, everybody, for your, your input here tonight. I really appreciate it. And I want to thank you again, Kathy, for covering for me at the DAC meeting. I also want to thank some of the board members and some of the staff that attended the Colorado State White Parent Coalition Celebration of El Dia de los Niños. I believe it was last, when was that? I can't remember now. But anyway, thanks so much for that. But one of the things that I want to talk about a little bit is the dyslexia issue. You know, it keeps coming up and coming up and coming up, and I'm not sure, I'm pretty sure that you all have had conversations with, with the parents that have come and participated during public participation. But when I heard the gentleman offering his services and the community of dyslexia services in terms of helping us understand, at least me, anyway, because I need to understand, and I'm sure there's precedent in terms of the Boulder Valley School District Board of Education setting up task forces. What would it, you know, what, what I would like to suggest is, is there a way where we could set up a community task force on dyslexia and invite those individuals that have the issue and the expertise on how to deal with it, so that we can start thinking about strategies and how we're going to deal with it? So that's, that's a suggestion.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, board members? Kathy? Either.
I just want to congratulate Richard for a very successful Dia de los Niños. It was well-attended. It was kind of a cold, gray Thursday morning, but that you had Federico Peña there, and the Lieutenant Governor, and the dancers, and it was just a very wonderful event, and I wish you many more successful events like that, because the work is, is great, and the community support was great to see, so, and thanks for including us. A couple other things. I did go to the DAC, and you don't need to think we were trying, you're a co-DAC person, so, and I always enjoy going to those meetings. And one of the questions that came up at the DAC was, somebody pulled out some of the budget recommendations and said, do you guys even use these? And so I assured them that their input was very important and very valuable to us. And I think we can't go far enough in thanking them and making sure that they understand how much we appreciate their feedback and the hard work that they put in, because as we all know, they work really hard on, on the, on the issues that we present to them and that they bring up on their own. So I want to say thanks for the, the good work of the DAC. And the retirement party, as Dr. Messenger mentioned, was wonderful to see so many people celebrating so many great years of service, and to see some of my own children's teachers and friends, and glad they're retiring, and I'm not anywhere getting close to that age. And I went to a thing called the Colorado Cooperation Conference, which was where the three ballot measures, three of the ones that we're seeing that came out of Build a Better Colorado were first initiated about a year ago. Heard some presentations on that, and a quick shout-out that this Saturday, there's going to be a launching event for gathering signatures, and if anybody, for the, for the ballot measure on the debreusing. And if anybody wants to know more about that, they can go to the Great Education Colorado website. There's going to be a lot of ballot measures this year, so it's going to take a lot of energy and effort for people to understand what all of them do and don't do. And then I think that was, that was it for my board comments, so thanks very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Jenny?
So I actually think that BVEA, if you, if you wanted to know more about getting a, getting a ballot or a petition for the ballot initiative, that you could ask Tina Marquess during, I'm sorry, Tina Marquess is right there. Tina, the other Tina M., Tina Mu, is sitting right back there. Because I believe that you all are sponsoring an event this Saturday where you can pick up a petition, and I hope some of us will be carrying them. I expect some of us will be carrying those petitions. I'd like to have a couple of shout-outs to the Brimfield community. I should ask, I see Ginger Ramsey in the audience there, and I should ask her if she was up all night this, because every year, I mean, I know that many of our high schools have an after-prom event, but nobody does it like Brimfield. And so the Just After Midnight, the Just After Midnight Open House alone, I read in the paper, had sixteen hundred members, members of our community walk through to see the amazing decorations that transform our high school every year. And the number of sponsors that were thanked in the Brimfield Enterprise this week took up a whole back page. So, and I, I brought my family through, and it was, it was just, it was just an amazing setup, and I know that the kids had a great time and were safe after prom. And it also, in, in the case of this particular Just After Midnight program, brings the community together, because I know there are people who work on our Just After Midnight decorations and who staff just, who staff the, the program all through the evening that don't, no longer have children at Brimfield High School, but they continue to participate because it's that great a community event, so. So I'd like to make that shout-out. I'd also like to make a shout-out to Lauren Floming, who's a, I know you all saw it, if you were checking your email this afternoon, is a phys ed teacher at Emerald Elementary, who won the, this year's Jared Polis Award. I think that's really awesome. He's a great teacher and a great member of the community. I, too, attended the retirement dinner. It's always a bittersweet event, because it's a reminder of how many great educators we have in Boulder Valley, and it's, it's just kind of sad to see some of them moving on to other things, although they're certainly entitled to. I wish them all the best in their post, post-education life. Again, and the awards that we attended, the superintendent's honor roll that we attended right before this was also a great opportunity to recognize the wonderful people we have working in Boulder Valley. I'm always proud of people from custodians, through classroom teachers, through administrators. We just have the best here, and it's, it's really great. And then thanks to the speakers who came out tonight. I know we're going to be hearing some more in June about our work with dyslexic students and, or, and how, how we're going to address those issues going forward. So I look forward to that. And thank you very much. Oh, and I do have one question I meant to ask during the superintendent's report. Sam, is that okay? Do we, do we, have we thought, sort of thought going forward how municipalization, if the, if Boulder, the city of Boulder does municipalize its electricity, if I'm saying that right? I don't have an opinion one way or the other, since I don't live in Boulder, but, but I wonder if we've thought about how that might affect our district?
Yeah, we have looked at that, and we continue to analyze that as it evolves, more details become available. And so, yeah, we have, both from around energy conservation and sustainability, as well as rates.
Okay.
And service, of course.
Thanks, Jenny. Tina?
Yeah, I know that most of the people who commented aren't here, but I thought the comments were really helpful tonight, and just want to thank the community for coming and sharing their thoughts with us. Also, Richard, I would, I like the idea of a task force. I think it makes sense to listen to the literacy update, and then maybe from then, we can reconvene as a board and see if that makes sense. I don't know what the process for that would be, but it might be something that we could take up in agenda setting as well. And then I'm just thinking about all these different petitions I think I want to carry, so I don't know if we can do a board challenge to the high schools to come up with a three-way bulletin board, clipboard, something like, I'm just kidding. Anyway, that's it.
For design tech class. Any other comments? Shelley?
So I also wanted to thank the people that have left for coming to speak. I agree with Mr. Belknap about the privacy issues, as you all know. I'm also really sympathetic to the parents who came and spoke about dyslexia. And I wanted to let you know that I actually talked to a dyslexia expert this week about what she felt we needed to be doing in the district. And what was really interesting was the research that she shared. She's a professor at CU, and like a national literacy expert. And what she shared was that what they're learning about the approach to dyslexia, the best way to overcome that, has also proven extremely effective for ELL students, and that they learn much more rapidly English when they're taught in this way. So I think that there's a good reason to look at it for more than one reason. She and a group of people already met with Ron Yahtzee. I'm not sure what came out of that. But I do think that it's important for us just, you know, not to meet with people and take up their time and then do nothing. So I'm really looking forward to something actually coming out of those meetings. And, Richard, I think your idea is a great one. I think we should have some sort of, at least, ad hoc committee that we can set up to really get people's expertise on understanding, like, the flow of what the district could do and what it would cost, because what I, you know, what I kept asking her was, how much does this cost? How much does this cost to do this? And what she was explaining to me was that it was a lot less than I was expecting. I mean, for just a couple hundred thousand dollars, we could do K through five programs that identify and actually do professional development for teachers in dyslexia. So I was really encouraged, and also that that would help our ELL students. So do we need to put the potential for a committee on the planning agenda? Or how would we?
We can, maybe in an agenda setting.
Whatever.
When we get to the end of the agenda, remind me of that. But we are also having an update on literacy, which will include a report on progress to date on dyslexia. It's coming up in June. Anything else?
Well, just, just for the timing of that, if, if, I think it should be in the process of being discussed just in case the June literacy meeting does not take us to the point where we have this whole dyslexia thing solved. Do you know what I mean? It would be good to have those, both those things in process, I think. And then I wanted to ask Bruce about Twin Lakes. When are we going to be having that conversation as a board?
So I sent you an update two weeks ago on where we are in the process, and so we're still in that process. So I can, I don't know. It's really in the county's hands now, as far as facilitating that. So we could check and see. I know they're in progress, so we will bring it back once we have something to consider.
So it'll, will it be before we break for July, or?
No, I don't.
No, okay.
No. It gets a slow-moving process. Glacial.
So I also wanted to say that I attended Richard's celebration, and I wish everyone could have been there to see how well-loved he is by his community. And also that I learned just so much about the Apostles Program, and how important it is to the women who teach the kids, not just to the kids. So I really got the full impact of that program. And I've always, it's always been my favorite ECE program since I met you four years ago at the Community Foundation, and you explained it, and it, it remains that for me. So, you know, I'm a fan of, of funding that as part of our ECE dollars. I think it's a great program. And the reason I love it is because it takes place in the kids' homes. And I, and I think that's just a wonderful idea. I also wanted Jenny to congratulate Ms. Floming, so I won't go into that, but I, I'm really happy that she. Mr. Floming, sorry. I certainly see why he'd be honored that way after reading the nomination letter, so. I also attended the Fairview High School 2016 Pops Concert on Saturday, and I just would like to say there's no shortage of talent. You know, you keep thinking it might run out, but it doesn't. They're really impressive kids, and also the staff that put that together. And I also, I know I've been sending out a lot of RFIs lately, so I want to thank Andrew Moore. Moore, Angel Stobach, Ron Cabrera, Diane Gamboa, and Melissa Barber for responding to the RFIs I've initiated. They've been really helpful, the information, and I will have a few follow-up questions, but I just wanted to thank you all. And then tonight you'll all notice that we have a lot of topics related to privacy on the agenda. And I just want to remind everyone that that's going to, continually evolving situation and that it's really important that we get our privacy policy right. And so I look forward to working on that more. And I asked Briggs earlier and I think he got distracted and maybe Bruce, you know this, but do you know what happened to House Bill 1222? You do?
Coming up.
Yeah. Yeah, I just was curious whether that went through or was killed or?
Maybe during legislative.
Okay, you're gonna, it's going to come up next or no?
Well, it's on the agenda, legislative.
1222. But 1222 is on there? You will be talking about 1222?
I looked it up.
Okay, thanks. So the reason I'm asking about that is because that's the online blended learning bill and there are real privacy implications associated with that. So I'm eager to hear how that developed. I know that it was still being discussed as of yesterday, I think. So I'm interested to know how the district is going to handle whatever came out of that. So, thanks.
Tom?
It's good to be back. I missed the last board meeting, so I'm still trying to get caught up. So when this, the conversation came up about the polling to go ask our voters for more money, I'm still processing that. My concerns are, is, you know, we just passed over a half a billion dollar bond. A couple of years prior to that, there was, we maxed out our mill levy override. We have lots of volunteers in the schools. We ask our parents to donate like up to $200 in elementary schools to help with funding and it just goes on and on and on. And I'm real concerned about wearing out that welcome and about being respectful to our taxpayers. I think we need to look really hard at our budgets and I know we're going to be talking about budgets in the upcoming few weeks about how we get more money back into the schools so hopefully that we can avoid asking for more and more money. I think it's up to us as a board, it's up to us as a district to really carve out every nickel we can to get back in our schools. And we have been taking money away from our schools rather than putting it in for a number of years now, almost every year since I've been on the board. And so it's really time that we start to inch back and get the money back in the schools. So, so that's just some of my thoughts randomly as I start to process some of this and we'll bring forward as we discuss on the budget, more things that I have some concrete ideas about. Yeah.
Thank you. And Tina, do you have something additional?
Just going to comment on the, just for Richard and Shelley, the literacy and early learning update is on June 14th. And then the following week, we have the quarterly planning session. So that might be that opportunity, just if you're thinking about timing and if we, you know, I just wanted to share that because we went over that today in agenda setting.
I just have a quick question and that is, on that committee that's bringing that report in on dyslexia, are community members, parents involved in that committee too?
So as a part of the strategic plan, literacy and early learning is, has been reported to you and obviously the dyslexia conversation fits into the literacy conversation. So Angel Stobach, who is the director of literacy, has been in conversation with the community members who have addressed the board several times. And so they've been a part of that conversation. And so what Angel has communicated in writing that I've shared with the board a couple of times on an RFI describes where we are in the process and that will be a part of her presentation at this June 14th meeting that Sam reflected upon. I think we have a strategic planning process of which we have working committees, so I guess I would encourage us to task our existing process to do the work that takes us to where we want to go as opposed to creating secondary processes that might require additional coordination. If we need community resources to help us with that, that would be a part of the conversation. But I think you'll find when Angel presents that she's had conversations with most everybody you've heard from. Shelley, if you have an additional resource in the community that hasn't been in touch with the district, I'd ask you.
You know, I said she's met with Ron Yahtzee already.
And Angel Stobach? Because Angels are actually taking. Okay, all right. Okay, well, I don't know. So anyway, yes.
Yeah, no, no, that's great. I agree with you. I don't want to double whatever's going on, as long as community members are involved and they're involved.
They're involved.
You know, comprehensively in terms of developing whatever's going to be developed. I think that's the way we ought to go.
Additional board questions, comments? Shelley?
So Bruce, related to that RFI, I was going to send something out, but since you brought it up, I'll just mention that. So what came back from my request about, you know, what it would cost and what we would do to help try and fix this problem was a really expensive program where it was like $3 million for adding more reading recovery and level literacy teachers and, you know, it went through a long thing that added up to millions of dollars. And from what I understand and what I've learned through listening to parents and experts talk about this over the past year, is that more reading recovery and more level literacy is not the solution to this, that it's something different from that. And actually, in that RFI, Angel identified it as the last thing on her list, which was like that letters program, I think it's called, and a couple of other things. And what she had on there added up to, you know, like $30,000 or something. And that's what they want, only they want it more, for more than just 30 first grade teachers. They want it K through five. So if you run that out, we're only talking, you know, several hundred thousand dollars to do what they want. They don't want more reading recovery. They don't want more level literacy. We may want that for other reasons, but they don't want that for dyslexia because it hasn't worked for their kids. So I just want to make sure that that, that's, that you're aware that that is not what they're asking for when they are asking for a fix for dyslexia, which is what I got back in that RFI. So that made me wonder if anyone was listening to them in that meeting, because that's not what they want. So, you know, I don't know how we resolve this. Maybe in June at the literacy meeting, we'll, we can discuss this again, so.
Thanks.
Any other board communication? I would just reemphasize the superintendent's honor roll, just one of my favorite events, the diversity of excellence in this district from the classroom to the offices, to the maintenance of the buildings, the food service, the special education, the counselors, social workers. It's an amazing team and I love that we highlight a few of our excellent staff every year, so thanks again for that. I think that'll do it for board communication and we'll move to the information items on our agenda, the first of which is our legislative update.
So it passed both houses and waits the governor's signature, is the answer to the question on House Bill 16122. So I assume the governor will sign it and then will amend it, so we'll follow up on that. Couple other areas that I would mention that we've been tracking, Senate Bill 187 and 188, our charter school legislation. And so I've kept you informed with multiple emails and texts the last week. So the revenue sharing aspect of those Senate bills appears to be at rest now and will not be incorporated in any legislation going forward. Some other aspects of what was in that legislation has been incorporated into the School Finance Act and the School Finance Act appears to have cleared the hurdles today to go forward. Obviously, our major interest in the School Finance Act is the funding for our schools next year. And so it seems to always get late in the session and it always tends to become kind of a tool to twist and manipulate other issues, as it did again this year. There were several runs at that piece of legislation, the School Finance Act, to tag things on to it, to leverage other actions, all of which failed, the exception being this compromise around the charter school legislation dimension. As we discussed today in agenda setting, our planning is that most likely this work around the sharing of mill levies and bonds probably is not an issue. It probably is an issue that will return to future conversation in our legislature, but for now, it is where it is. And so we'll give a more detailed update of the aspects of this charter school legislation that were embedded in the School Finance Act, I think. Going forward, what we've been building the 1617 budget on, that we presented to the board several times, we'll be back again before the board in two weeks, is the revenue projections that we brought to you are consistent with ultimately what will be in the School Finance Act. So that's the good news. I mean, of course, we'd like it to be more, but it is, that's where it is. So those are a couple I wanted to mention. The other that we, you know, had tracked was around the student data privacy, again, awaits the governor's signature. So going forward, that, we'll probably talk a bit more about that when we look at policy. I think that what was shared with you in the write-up for the policy is that we are confident what's in the draft policy is consistent with the legislation. Doesn't mean there can't be more in it, but it, we don't see a need to change the presented policy with regard to this legislation. As you know, some of the timing of waiting on this was to give DAC an opportunity to do what it was reported to you tonight and that's helpful. And also, we wanted to see where the legislation wound up because if it was going to take us a different direction, we needed to know that. So those are some of the big areas that we monitored. I think there are a number of school-related legislative bills that, you know, were killed in the final weeks and some that, you know, will probably be back and some that are back every year. Several of them did not proceed. So anyway, that's a quick update. I'd be glad to answer questions. I think others have been tracking this and involved as well.
Great. Questions, board members? Tina?
Yeah, so we know that a lot of districts are looking at doing mill levy, mill overrides this year. Have you heard, just through your peers, how they're addressing charters in these overrides?
Well, I would just say it varies by district because the nature of the charters probably vary by district. I mean, there are some, some districts that have not maybe historically shared overrides or bonds. I think that will be the exception going forward. I'd be surprised if that isn't a part, and that doesn't mean maybe equal sharing or, I mean, again, it looks different within our own district and between charters and probably between districts. I don't, I think there's an increased awareness among peer districts of those who run mill levy overrides and bonds, that there's both politically and probably realistically a need to incorporate a partnership with charter schools. And I certainly don't want to speak for other school districts. Part of our Denver area superintendent's discussion last week was this topic when I was with them and so we had Denver there, Cherry Creek there, you know, many of the districts that are surround us that we work closely with and some of them have historically shared their levies, others are probably going to forward. I will tell you, there are, most of our peer districts in the immediate area will be running mill levies and/or bonds or both. So I think there'll be opportunity to test that as soon as this November. Ultimately, if they're district authorized charters, then that's through the relationship they establish with the charter, either historically through their contracts or going forward, what contract they would establish with them. So there isn't anything in the proposed legislation in the School Finance Act that will alter the actions of school districts. I think it's more just the awareness and probably some political pressure to do so.
It would be interesting to see if any districts develop language that when they think about how their overrides are allocated, use equity as part of that, you know, as a weighting factor.
Sure. Melissa Barber, of course, works with her peers around the state on policy and as you are both active, all of you are active in Casby. My guess is there may be some model language that they either develop or might just collect and share. So I think those would be, and again, I think that may be more active conversation, even though the legislation did not pass, I would guess there'd be a more active conversation in the off-season.
Yeah, that'd be great to know because I think it's something we really need to talk about.
Anybody else, questions for Dr. Messenger on the legislative update? If not, we will move to the next information item on our agenda, update from CIBOC, the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Good to see you again, gentlemen.
So before they start, I just want to publicly acknowledge the leadership of our two co-chairs for CIBOC. I have a chance at conflicts with the District Parent Council meeting on those Wednesday nights, so I always get to spend an hour with CIBOC and then go next door to the other meeting. But as you'll hear in the report, they're doing good work and they're early in a multi-year process. So anyway, welcome.
Thank you, Bruce. My name is Pat Quinn and I'm serving as the chair of CIBOC. So we're here tonight to give you our quarterly update. Last time we spent most of our time getting information from the, from the staff on what was going on with the bond and getting educated. Your board packet, I believe you've got three reports tonight. The, I'm a CPA, active, I just renewed my certificate for the 20th time. And so a spreadsheet like this is something that, you know, that just gets me real excited. So we provided you, but this spreadsheet is pretty meaningful. There's a lot of information that shows you the phases of each one of the projects, of each one of the schools, the budgets of them and where the budget sits right now and expenditures to date. I would just simply make a comment that to date, we've spent $21,653,000, at least the district has of the bond, the bonds. And you could see a page, the income statement shows you where that money was spent and you can see, we even did a graph for you to, so you can understand where the, you know, what money's going out the door. So we've been, spent our time getting familiar with, with the entire bond issue, with the budgets to make sure that the bond funds will survive all the way through the completion of the three phases. We have been, had a debate for the last couple of meetings about what projects we should look at, which we should not look at, because if a project is on budget based on the master plan, then obviously it's not something we need to see or need to hear about and we'll know that by looking at the report. There was discussion on what level, when there's budget adjustments, at what level should CIBOC look at it? After much discussion, we came to a level of $500,000. So when a project changes, if it's over budget by $500,000, CIBOC will then, you know, we'll come to CIBOC, staff will make a presentation and we will approve those changes or not. And once again, we're, you know, we're looking for feedback, we're advisory to you, but that was, that was standard we said. With that said, we've had several projects come to us the last couple of months for budget adjustments. Jeff Clay is going to, going to talk about the first three, the exemplar schools and the budget changes there.
Great. Thank you very much for your time tonight. So there were three schools that, the exemplar schools, Creekside, Douglas, and Emerald, that the committee reviewed and concurred with staff's recommendations to transfer additional reserve funds. Let's talk about the additional reserve funds a bit. When we sold the bond, when you sold the bonds for the $250 million worth of bonds, you sold them at a premium of 33, pardon me, $30,812,900. So you, you made some money when you sold the bonds. So that's, that's the good side of what the economy has done over the past several years. What the economy has taken away is the fact that, that construction prices have really risen significantly, especially on these exemplar schools. And while, while inflation was built into the budget, and Pat will discuss that a little bit later about where the, what the inflation dollars are, these three schools specifically came out way ahead of budget once, once, once staff started to look into them. Staff did a lot of value engineering, staff did a lot of sharpening of pencils and really pushed the, really pushed the contractors to sharpen their pencils. But in the end, they still needed additional funds to complete these schools. So the committee agreed with staff's recommendation to increase the Creekside budget by $3,865,000, the Douglas budget by $3,130,000, and the Emerald budget by $3,280,000. We were presented with, with a lot of data that the, that staff provided in terms of what the construction environment is in the greater Denver metro area. And there's a lot of construction going on and a lot of construction coming up. What happened during the last recession, we were told, is that a lot of the contractors were driven out of, out of business. And they went and they did something else because there was no construction going on between 2008, 2009, 2010. So that limited the labor pool, which then obviously increased the cost of, of the, of the construction costs. Any questions?
Yeah, that's good. Yep. And so, so we approved those, the budget increases there. And so then last month, we had presented to us a new project that had not been part of the, it was part of the master plan, and this is at Centaurus High School. And while it was part of the master planned, it was all the master planned expenditures that had been approved or, you know, in the bond issuer for deferred maintenance. And there were certain improvements that the, the staff wanted to make. And I think it was led by Dr. Messenger, that they wanted to make improvements in addition to what had been approved in the bond issue. And so the staff came to us with, you know, with the principal of Centaurus, Don Orr and Rob Price and Dr. Messenger, and made a presentation to us, asking for an additional $7.1 million for Centaurus out of the, and Jeff will cover later where we're at in the additional reserve transfers because we had $20 million left after we were, after we approved the three exemplar schools. This one created a tremendous amount of debate and a little bit level of discomfort within staff, or excuse me, within CIBOC because we didn't, we weren't familiar with the public process that you would want us to go through or that is necessary in order to, to bring a new project to, to the table. So. project to, to, to the table. So, part of our mission tonight, on behalf of our committee, is to tell you that there was discomfort, clearly, that was presented well, that the $7.1 million, if we allocated, which we did approve, that would be spent well on Centaurus. But the lack of public input for other projects, you know, vis-à-vis, you know, the rest of the district, was something that created discomfort with, with us. And so, we're looking, we're looking to either say we did good or to provide us additional guidance on, on the approval of Centaurus. It was very significant to, to the members. In fact, you know, as a mayor, in city council, well, first of all, the mayor doesn't vote, but in city council, everybody has to vote. And when people wanted to abstain, I didn't know what to do. I got in a panic. And so, we had more, more people abstaining last time. And, and the way we agreed to approve Centaurus was that we would, we would report to you our concern about the public process. Jeff's going to talk about where we're at with the reserves.
So, let's recap it. When we sold the $250 million worth of bonds, we, we saw a, a bond premium of $30,812,900. So, with what we just discussed between Creekside, Douglas Elementary, and Centaurus, we have a remaining surplus or remaining, remaining bond premium of $13,437,900. Pat and I are of the opinion that, that, that this is kind of a gift that the economy has given us to take some of the sting away from what the economy has done on the cost side. We have no idea what happens when you sell the rest of the bonds and if there will be premium in the next bond issue. There could be. I'm not an economist. I'm a social worker. I work for the YMCA. But, the reality is that, who knows what's going to happen with, with, with bond premium in the next, in the next round of selling, selling the bond. So, I think staff has done a good job of phasing these projects, knowing full well that, that these exemplar schools are going to cost us some significant money over and above the budget. And that future projects in Phase Two and Three will probably not need additional funds from bond premium from the sale of the bonds. I think that there's probably other projects that are coming down the pike in Phase One that we'll probably be reporting back to you at a future date, that will, that will eat some more of this, this remaining $13 million, and we'll be reporting to you on that as well.
Yeah, I'll just close. The, the one thing that I guess we're all concerned about is built into the bond issue, you know, built into the bond issue was an inflation reserve for projects going out. And I was sitting there trying to look at the numbers here in the spreadsheet that I believe the total number, the total number that's built into for inflation now that's left over is $32,444,000. So, you know, out of a total, say, $520 million that's left to be spent. And so, so there is, there is inflation within each, each of these budgets. But, once again, because we had overages that occurred so far, we take our responsibility to report back to you very seriously. You know, we do feel that staff has their handle on the costs. They're trying to mitigate it, engineer where they can. And we do have inflation built within the budgets. And that is our report tonight. We're looking forward to your questions or comments.
Great. Thank you both. Just a clarifying question on this Centaurus project. If I'm understanding you correctly, staff proposed an additional improvement at Centaurus, and CIBOC felt that they made a good case. But there was concern that, what, that we didn't loop in the broader community in that process because it was so much money? Or could you say a little more about that?
I guess I'll say it from my, purely from my point of view, watching, you know, and getting involved in bond issues, you know, going back to the 80s, that, you know, that when you, when you did the bond issue in the master plan, that you, you know, you brought the community in, you, you spent the money. I mean, my view is that school boards look across the region to make sure that, you know, that there's adequate expenditures across the region. And when you have a project that didn't make it through that original process, and, and then, you know, that comes up new, do you need to redo that process or portions that process or inform people? You know, the superintendent, obviously, and staff, you know, are looking across the, the school district. But you could see our discomfort to the extent that you're, you're so public in your process to come up with your list of bond programs. When you add a new one on, and there really isn't public input, is, it's really a question for you. Is it okay process-wise for the board?
And allow me to elaborate a little bit as well. I think there were two issues. I think the first issue was, was there enough public notice? I happen to think that, that the process that's used in terms of putting out public notice, everything is posted on the website. Our agenda is posted on the website. Our minutes are posted on the website just as yours are. But I think that there was some, some question that, given the dollar amount that we were being asked to approve, does, you know, is, is the public aware of this? I would suspect they're not, but I think that's just the nature of the public's interaction with the school. I think it's more reactive than proactive. I think the discomfort came, and I, and I think we have a plan to resolve that, is all of this information came to us that night for, for a $7 million, $7.1 million request. I think with further discussion with Dr. Messenger and Don Orr and his staff, we're going to do a better job of preparing the committee for these big questions that will continue to arise. And I, I would also say, this is a good problem for you to have. I mean, we've got extra, we've got extra dollars that we can use to do some things that, that really need to be done. I, I think I have this figure correct, that the, the vast majority of the initial Centaurus budget is going to be taken up by mechanicals. Like, something like 60% is going to be mechanicals, HVAC and roof and things that people won't ever see. So, there's this additional $7 million. I think the, the case was made very well. I just don't think that there was enough time for the committee to digest it and have a comfort level that they were doing the right thing, that we were doing the right thing.
Thank you. Board members, questions? Richard? Are you pointing to Kathy? Kathy? Thank you for, let me turn my head. Kathy?
So, I just want to make sure I understand kind of the sequence. So, for the three, for the three elementary schools, the cost overruns were basically costs that were greater than what were expected when that was initially priced up, but was within the scope of the work.
Right. And there were some issues, like, you know, there were floodplain issues that existed and some of the location issues. There, I mean, once again, the staff did a great job of presenting the nuances they, they couldn't have known when they were estimating the cost in 2014.
Right. And so, they went back and value engineered to the best of their ability and then said, here's what we can't value engineer out without changing what we originally thought we were going to do.
Right.
But on the Centaurus one, that's changing the scope of the work.
Correct.
And so, the question for the board is, how do we deal with that change in scope of work? Are we setting precedent if we allow a change in scope of work, even recognizing that Centaurus is our exemplar high school that we want to do the most work on? But what is our public procedure for doing that? Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Yes. And is, is that $7.1 million all scope? Because I believe it's all part of the master plan. It just wasn't included in the bond. So, there's, there's, and I think, I think Dr. Messenger made the case for, is it scope or is it really just, just an expansion of the master plan that we now have the funds to, the resources to fund?
If Dr. Messenger wants to provide some commentary, you know, we, you know, we're volunteers here. And we absorbed a lot in, in one night, if we're not presenting, you know. But I will stress, once again, we are simply making sure that we're doing the way the board wants us to. I mean, that you, we are advisory to the board. And you may be very comfortable with our process. One of the points that was made that night is that we're made up of representatives around the school district. I mean, and, and so, so you have, you have several different, you know, people with several different agendas there. And if they come together and agree, and, and they did, then that is the public process that the board wants, wants to see.
Now, I, the amount of work that you're having to put into this and these spreadsheets and all that is just awesome. And so, it's meant...
Staff, absolutely.
I know. But, but, so it's not meant to, I'm just trying to make sure you, I understand what you're asking of us and what the questions are, because it's not critical of the process you have all engaged in, because I know you've engaged in a ton of time. And thank you for all of that and, and for presenting it to us for us to talk about. I really appreciate that. But I'll defer to Richard and then think about my next question.
Well, thank you very much. And, and I want to congratulate Centaurus High School for justifying that as well as they did. There's a, there's a bottom to that bucket that we have in terms of reserves. I mean, it's not like it's bottomless.
Exactly.
And what's the percentage as it relates to the increases from the original budget request from each of these particular schools that went over?
You know, I calculated that at the time. I did not bring those numbers, but it was substantial. And Don's back there, it was certainly above 20% on, on each, on each one. So, it was, it was very substantial.
And, and the 20% is based on the...
The original budget.
Right. But, but in terms of the, the reason why it's 20% higher is because of the construction cost and the inflation and all of that.
Right. And like I said, there were, there were issues, there were issues on the site issues and floodplain issues, locations of the schools, where you, the way you sequence construction. So, so there were multiple issues. Certainly, the, the costs, you know, the, the increase in costs was well documented. And anecdotally, we all have experienced that, noting, noting that the construction costs are a lot higher today than they were in 2013, when most of these numbers were developed.
What do you think about 20%? Is that high or, or is that something that...
Well, once again, I'm, I, you know, I'm a CPA, CFO. Yeah, it's high. I mean, it seemed, it seemed like a high number. But I will tell you that I thought staff did a great job. I don't think there was any discomfort on, on the overage numbers on those three schools, you know, among the CIBOC committee. Jeff and I had a couple of advanced meetings with, with staff on that. And, and I thought that, and in particular, I'll call out, Rob Price did a great job. I'm sure he got a lot of advice in, in presenting information. Anecdotally, information, information from other school districts, other construction projects where there were, there were similar or higher increases that were occurring between, you know, between bond issues that had been passed in 2013, 2014, other, you know, and construction occurring now.
So, what is the amount left over on that reserve bucket that you're talking about?
13.4 million. And then, I'll point out, but once again, that each, each budget has a contingency fund in it, you know, that was built into it. There's an inflation budget, and then there's also, there's also a program reserve as well. So, so, so there are places where you can reach into if you need to. Now, the staff, you would want me to point out that, because the real question has come down, the exemplar schools were unique. They were, you know, full construction projects. And when they looked at the other one, two, and three projects, they, they felt strongly and once again, made a good case that they didn't feel that, that the same construction pressures would result in similar budget overages. And whatever was in the inflation reserve would be enough to, to cover that. And once again, they made that case adequately to the, you know, to, to CIBOC.
The, the question that I have, and I guess this is more procedural in terms for us and for you, what happens when you have other exemplar schools that want to request a rescoping or...
These are the only exemplar schools. They're in this group. All the Phase One exemplar schools have been addressed tonight.
But if...
Yeah.
But let me, let me finish my thought here. If, if a Douglas Elementary School wants to rescope, I mean, I know that they're part of the exemplar.
That, that was part of the three buildings that they mentioned earlier, Richard. Those are all, so all four of the exemplar schools have been addressed in Phase One, and they've already addressed that. So, there aren't any other exemplar schools in Phase One or any of the other phases.
Okay. So, in terms of the precedent that, that Kathy mentioned a little bit later, earlier, so we're not worried about the precedent then at this point, because they're...
Staff is worried about that.
Other questions? Shelley?
I just want to thank you for the work. I have, every board meeting, we, we approve millions of dollars to leave this room. And every time we do, I'm like, how much have we spent already? Where are we? You know, what, where, you know, where are we in this process? So, I was really, really glad to see your report. And it was, you know, very clear. And I really appreciate the work you're doing on this. As for the question around Centaurus, I actually think I found a policy that addresses this issue. It's policy FEA. And it's called Educational Specifications. And it's broken into two categories, general specifications and specific specifications. And I believe we've met the requirement for general specifications by approving the bond. You know, we all roughly knew what was involved in that bond and what was happening at, you know, the school. So, so those were approved by the Board of Education to serve as guidelines for major remodeling, building additions, and new building construction. So, I think we did that. I think what we haven't done with regard to what the problem you're, you're describing is, falls under specific specifications. And, and basically, what it says is that the board needs to consider and approve any, anything that's outside of our general specification, which I think this would qualify for. We need to, you know, all of us need to look at this policy. But, so I'm thinking that, according to this policy, what needs to happen is that if another situation comes up like that, it probably needs to come back to the board for approval, which would be consistent with policy and also would relieve you of the discomfort you're feeling, because no one wants you to be feeling discomfort when you're putting in this much time and effort. So, I, I think we should all look at that as, you know, whether we think this is the applicable policy, it certainly looks like it is. So, again, that's policy FEA. And then, I, I wanted to ask you, and maybe this is really more of a question for Don Orr, but I have had faculty at Boulder High School ask me why for $19 million, they're not getting their bathrooms fixed. So, I think that's a legitimate question. And if it doesn't fall with you, then maybe it falls somewhere else. But they're very concerned that things are being done over there that are less important than upgrading the bathrooms at Boulder High. And as someone who had two kids go through there, I can attest to the fact that those bathrooms are not what they need to be. So, I'm just going to put a little plug in for bathrooms at Boulder High.
They will all be improved. So, we just obviously need to communicate.
Dr. Messenger, I'm sorry?
They will be improved. We obviously need some communication with faculty.
Approved?
Improved.
Improved.
That's part of the scope of the work of almost all of our projects.
Okay. I, I don't think that is clear to them.
Good. It's a two-year project at Boulder High. So, it's not work that may be being done this summer.
Okay. So, okay.
So, improved bathrooms coming, apparently.
That's right.
Jenny?
Oh, so I was going to thank you for your work. This is, I was on the CIBOC for the last bond. And it's hard work, and it's hard to get your head around what's going on. And you, you all are up to speed way faster than we were. I was still absolutely baffled at your point in the process. So, thank you so much for, for all the hard work you've put in. I'm going to say that I think that, that I'm going to agree with what you did. I, I agree that it was probably, you were, I can see that there was some discomfort around Centaurus, but I think that probably means that you had a really good discussion about it. And I, in my opinion, you made a suggestion that I think you should follow up on, which is that you need more, if something like this comes up again, I, I believe you should press staff for more time. So, I hope staff will give you more time and to consider and, and your materials in advance, so that you can think about it, perhaps even over two meetings. And, but other than that, I mean, I think that my, when we appointed CIBOC, I thought that we were appointing you to represent your communities and the public and, and to exercise your special expertise. And, and I actually think that, that one of the things we did as a board, and which I think would be allowed by this policy, is we said that we would rely on CIBOC to make these recommendations to us, so that when there was a change in scope, we would ask you for your recommendation, because we knew that you would be able, you had special ex, I mean, we appointed people. You guys are great. I mean, your qualifications, when we appointed you, were pretty amazing. And we knew that you would have nothing, I mean, that you would have time to, to sort of hash things over in a way that we might not. So, I thank you for the work that I know is hard. But if, if you were uncomfortable, I think that you must have had a really good discussion.
Yeah. I'll just make one clarity. I mean, the word discomfort was because we didn't know the direction from the board. If you give us direction that we're doing what you want us to do, then we're, we're comfortable again.
Well, I was under the impression that's what we asked you to do, was to review that kind of information and then make a recommendation.
And that's why it's good idea for us to meet with you guys quarterly, so we can tell you what, so.
Yeah. I think that was within your charge.
Jenny's conclude, you're done, Jenny?
Yes.
Tina?
So, so you're talking about making a recommendation to the board? But this, they're not, they didn't make a recommendation to us about Centaurus. It's done.
Right, right. But I, but I think that's what we asked them to do.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on the language that we're using, because that's, that's a different process.
But I, but I think that they were within scope. And I think that's what we asked them to do, was to approve those kinds of variations that's in, within their charge.
Shelley?
Yeah, I, I don't think that's the case. I think that's why we have policy, so that we're just not winging it in these situations. And I think that this policy probably pretty clearly states that they should be coming back to the board. And, you know, no fault of your own, because you didn't know that. In fact, we didn't know that. But I think that's the case from reading this policy. So, and I don't see why that's a particular problem. I'm, as long as the board understands the issues, I, I don't think we're going to be questioning the district on these things. But it is a matter of policy that this be done, so.
But I would still, I mean, however we decide, I would still appreciate the recommendation from CIBOC, because I think that's what we asked them to do.
And I, I think we understand that we're advisory. And, and you all make the decision. If you decide that that's not, that you're not going to take our advice, that's, I, I think we understand that we're, we're not in charge of spending the $7.1 million. We're just telling you that we went through a process. We're going to improve the process as we move forward. But we went through a process and we approved, we approved the fact that we would refer this to you or advise you that we agree with you.
A board, other board members who haven't spoken yet. Tom?
So, thanks so much. You know, your job is to do something that we don't have the time or ability to do. And members of our community with expertise to dig into the details and try to understand what is going on with the bond money, to provide that oversight function is exactly what we want to do. And my advice as a board member to you would be, if you are uncomfortable with things, kick them up to the board. If you, don't, don't make a recommendation, say this needs to go... Don't make a recommendation, say this needs to go to the board. And I do agree with the policy that there are things that you believe are out of scope, then that should come to the board for approval, not, not just, you know, money be spent if it is indeed out of scope. So that's why to be looking for you to give me a recommendation that this is out of scope with the project. I mean, there are certain things, obviously, with planning and budgets and inflation and unforeseen circumstances, they're still within the overall scope of the, of the project, but it just costs more money. And that's understood, but if there are things that are clearly to you outside of what the intended scope was in the facility's master plan, I believe that that should come to the board. And I would want your recommendation, you know, yay, nay, whatever, you know, but I still think to go beyond that, beyond the scope of work should be approved by the board. And so, and if you do feel uncomfortable about something, say, I need more information, I need more time. I mean, I sit here all the time and get hit with stuff that, that I haven't dug into enough and don't feel comfortable about, so I know what you're feeling. You know, ask for more time and more information if you need it, and I certainly will support you in that. And again, thank you so much for your work.
Kathy?
I would echo, I think, what Tom and Shelley have said, that if, I think there's also a definitional issue here, which is scope of the bond and scope of the master plan. And my understanding was this was perhaps within the scope of a facility's master plan, but not within the scope of the bond. Do I have that technically? There is a distinction made there?
I would defer to Dr. Messenger, could you have that conversation about Centaurus specifically?
But, but all I was going to say is, it sounds like going forward, staff doesn't think we're going to have this issue, but if there is an excess, something in, again, that might exceed the scope, I think it would be great for you guys to, we meet, you know, pretty regularly, to kick it to us, so that you don't have those periods of feeling uncomfortable, and so that's all. I'm not being critical at all, I'm just saying going forward, if this comes up, because I know we think that that might not happen, but we can't foresee the future. So, you know, kick it back to us for, if there's a change in scope, I just think would be a better way to go forward.
Tina?
Yeah, I'll echo what Tom, Shelley, and Kathy said, and also I just, by taking it to the board, it automatically becomes public. So that's just, you know, that one piece about this idea of community input or just public awareness around decisions we make that are outside the first draft of what we had intended or allocated for the bond, it might make sense to do that. You know, I think, you know, obviously all did the right thing, and, but maybe that's just a good best practice, so that we keep that, you know, total transparency with how we expend these monies.
So I think I've heard four board members who would like to be more engaged when projects outside the scope, at least of multimillion dollar magnitude, come up, that they come to us in some way. Dr. Messenger, I wanted to ask for your perspective, and also how we might codify that.
So I think what's been stated, and I just echo that, is we don't anticipate that's going to happen, and there is some discussion, I think, whether this is really outside of the scope of the project, because as you read what was charged for Centaurus, and what we've talked about from the beginning as being an exemplar school, we'd say this is probably within the scope, but clearly the cost is greater than what was initially projected. So, but that probably is just a matter of semantics and conversation. This is a building that will host a hundred, eighteen hundred students in the future, and so some of this work is what was originally anticipated, and I think what Jeff indicated is that this is a building that was under-invested in, in the last bond in '06 compared to the other schools. And so some of this is catching up on work that probably should have been done, or could have been done. You know, there was only so much money then as well. So, but ultimately, this will be a school that will house as many students as Monarch School for East County. And so, you know, some of what we saw was within the scope of the exemplar status, and the needs of that building are now, and there is additional work as part of the master plan that will need to be in the next bond to make, to get this building to where it needs to be. But this is a good first step, significant investment that will improve this infrastructure notably, and doesn't, doesn't get us down the road as far as we'd like on the master plan, but there are limitations. That'll be true of all of our projects, and so, but we don't anticipate that, I certainly don't have any concern. If we have a question, we'll work with CIBOC, and if they decide we'd like this to go to the board, then it'll come to the board. And certainly, as has been suggested by several board members tonight, if they feel like they can make a recommendation, they will, or if they don't, they probably won't, and so we'll bring it to the board that way. So I think we're fine with all that. I sat in on most of this conversation. Dr. Haniford, Principal Centaurus did an outstanding job presenting the work. Many, many staff, many community have been involved in this planning at Centaurus, and so I think it's had a lot of public fingerprints all over it, which is good. And, but, you know, if we get into a situation like this, bringing it forward to the board more formally, we certainly can do that. It's all, all within our, our scope of work. So again, having the reserve, as has been noted tonight, is a benefit, as we deal with a pretty challenging economy around construction. It's good to have some, some extra cash to help with these projects.
Additional questions or comments, board members? Conversation has been helpful to us, has it been helpful to you?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Right. Well, Jeff and Pat, we very much appreciate your service and your time tonight. We look forward to seeing you next quarter.
And I do want to emphasize how much this, how much the committee appreciates the staff effort. I mean, there's a tremendous amount of staff effort, a lot of questions, a lot of iterations, and so it's been an enjoyable process, I think, for all of us, so.
It's a good team, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Let's see, that concludes our information items. Next, we have our action items consent grouping, but first I need to take a five-minute break.
All right. Okay, let's get back to the meeting, folks. Next item on the agenda is action items consent grouping. Eight point one personnel items, eight point two approval of minutes, April twenty six, twenty sixteen. Eight point three, twenty fifteen sixteen additional transfer of funds. Eight point four, twenty fifteen sixteen supplemental budget. Eight point five acceptance of donation, food services department. Eight point six agreement for services, BVSD and Boulder County Mental Health. Eight point seven non-renewal of contracts. Eight point eight proposed fees and adjustments, twenty sixteen seventeen. Eight point nine grant health services, school health professionals, Colorado Department of Education. And eight point ten grant instructional services and equity, comprehensive health education, Colorado Department of Education. Are there any items board members would like to pull from the consent grouping? Shelley?
Where is it? Eight point eight?
Eight point eight, okay. Any other items? If not, I will need a motion to approve the consent grouping without item eight point eight. Moved by Kathy, second by Shelley. Laura, could you please call the vote on the consent grouping?
Belval.
Yes.
Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia. Gebhardt. Marquess. Myers.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we pulled eight point eight. Proposed fees and adjustments, twenty sixteen seventeen. Shelley?
So this is the one to web fee. And I sent an email today to everyone so that I didn't have to detail my concerns in great length, at great length tonight. But one thing I want to say that I didn't say in my email is that I'm uncomfortable that we didn't start hearing from people in the community until this morning's newspaper article came out. And so that tells me that we haven't done enough community input on this. If in one day, you know, I received at least five emails from people with different perspectives on this, it made me feel like we need to give this a little more time to hear what people might say. And the other, you know, one of the other main concerns I have is that this fee is mandatory, even for parents who don't want to participate. And that feels pretty heavy-handed to me, especially since some people just can't afford more fees, even though they may not meet the requirement for free and reduced lunch and may not be able to get, you know, a complete waiver on this. So that concerns me. Also concerns me that these Chromebooks will actually end up being required for work done in core classes, which is really against both policy and statute. So even though that's not what we're saying we're doing, I think that in practicality, that's what will end up being done. I also think that, you know, by doing this, and it's not that I don't necessarily think that, you know, computers are a good idea, especially for high school, because I do, but I think that it's taking us down this slippery slope of online learning that we haven't discussed. You know, we haven't discussed as a board the repercussions and implications of that, especially based on the research that's coming out all the time about how kids just don't learn as well online as they do in traditional settings. So I'm afraid this is really setting us up to go down that path without a lot of discussion about that. And then I think you all got their email about someone who was concerned about screen time and also Wi-Fi exposure. Those are just things that are on parents' mind, and I think we need to be hearing those before we do something like this. And then probably my main concern is this Google Sync feature that I was telling you about my email. It allows Google to track all kinds of information on kids when that feature is activated, which it will be in BVSD. It sends the student user's entire browsing trail to Google, linking the data collected to the students' accounts, which often include their names and dates of birth. So this is very, you know, personal information. It also keeps track of their, their, all their behavior on the internet. So every website they go to, everything they look at, as long as they, when they venture from Google Apps onto YouTube or something, all that data is capturable. And that's a problem because Google has signed a privacy pledge that said they won't collect information that's not for legitimate educational purpose. And clearly, they're violating that privacy pledge. And many school districts turn this Google Sync off, and we are not doing that. And that is a major concern for me. And then the other thing is that I think that we're putting the cart a little bit before the horse because we don't have a privacy policy in place, which is just probably a matter of a couple of weeks away. And I feel like that should be in place so that we know what we can and can't do with these Chromebooks. I mean, right now, we would be doing things that we might in two weeks say we're not supposed to be doing. So I think it would be, you know, wise to, to just take a little more time on this. And, you know, the last thing I want to say about this is that, you know, kids don't have any say about what kind of device are put in their hands. And, and, you know, parents don't have any say about that either. And I just don't think they understand the risk to their children's information. And if we're not being totally transparent about that, I think we're really doing incredible disservice to these kids whose, whose, you know, record in middle school is going to be accessible by their employers thirty years later, or their college admissions people, or their insurance companies. Like, we don't even know where this data goes once Google gets a hold of it, or other vendors. I just think that there's just absolutely no question that their rights to privacy come before educational innovation, even though I don't actually think that's a trade-off, become before anything else that we want to do. And, and so I, I think that's going to come up when our discussions on the privacy policy, but I think it's up right now with this Chromebook issue. So for all those reasons, I would really like to make a motion to postpone action on this until the boards really had a time, had time to understand what this means, because this is a big deal. And until we've had time to hear from parents, because we're already starting to, and we just haven't had enough time. We've only had like twelve hours to hear from parents on this. So I recommend postponing this, at least until June, where we can have more discussions. We have several meetings between now and then, and maybe we can, you know, squeeze this topic in somewhere along the way.
Are you making a motion then?
Yes, I am.
Could you restate it?
I would like to move that we postpone action on the technology fee until sometime in June, when we have a privacy policy in place and when we have a clear understanding of how our community feels about this issue.
Motion needs a second? Second by Richard.
Let me, let me, let me just say a couple of things. One is I appreciate all the principals that wrote that letter and signed on to that letter supporting the Chromebooks. I think I have a question as it relates to the students that are not able to afford the Chromebooks. And I, and I saw that kids that aren't free and reduced lunch status will be getting the Chromebooks anyway. My question is, has or have the principals thought about what happens to those students that don't? Or what's the process for those students to actually get access to those particular Chromebooks? Is there a process where they have to request it? Or are they just immediately going to be flagged and people know who they are? Is there a process, number one? And if there is, and if the kids don't follow that process and they don't get the Chromebook, then what's, what's the consequence for those particular students that don't get it?
Okay, Dr. Messenger?
So we've got about three policies wrapped around in here. And so we've got privacy over top of fees, over top our policy around free and reduced. So we have a policy in district that students who can't access services, and they qualify for free and reduced, we have systems in place in many, many areas, including all these fees, where we take care of that. We absolutely maintain appropriate confidentiality and respect for the individuals, Richard, to your question. It would be no different under here than football or anything else we do. So, and our staff is very sensitive to that. And we also have students who don't qualify for free and reduced, who don't have means to do a lot of things that we do, and we take care of those students as well. So it's just automatic if they qualify for free and reduced. But we have families who don't apply, but they have needs and we work to support them. We have, our impact on education foundation has been very generous in their resources, as have our parents to do that. So, so we would make sure that, that were in place. I just want to remind the board, this is not, this is, if it's approved, would allow schools to proceed with this fee. It doesn't require that they do. Theoretically, no one could proceed, and that would not, I mean, all this does is allow for the collection of fees if they choose to do that. And so that's what's been described in the email correspondence that we've responded to questions about. The issues around privacy and some of the concerns expressed, we have thousands of Chromebooks in place today, and we have students using them. So that's probably yet another conversation. But again, some of these very students that we're talking about at two of our high schools are already using their Chromebooks. And, and I was just at El Dorado K eight yesterday, and hundreds and hundreds of students. I mean, you know all this, and so you'll see it tomorrow if you have a chance to visit Broomfield High. So if there are concerns about privacy issues and the synchronization in the use of these devices, then that's related to a different conversation than we probably are asking tonight. This is simply giving schools the permission to proceed with their communities and consider the collection of fees around technology with these provisions. That's all this is asking for, just like the other fees that are in here. If a school wants to proceed that, this is a request that came from principals who want the ability to do this. We have schools doing fundraising and generating thousands of dollars and buying devices. I mean, that's going on. So in some schools would prefer to use that in combination with the fee structure. This simply opens a door for them to do that. So I just would want to make clear that that's what this proposal is, is just simply to give them permission to do it.
Thank you. Tina?
Yeah, so is this giving permission to any school, elementary, middle, preschool?
Yes.
Okay, so I think it would be helpful for me to understand the community process that would be adopted, because I feel there's this tremendous pressure to do web to one from pre-K to twelve. And I'm not, as you well know, I'm not completely bought into the elementary level. I have mixed feelings on middle, I'm great with high school. So I feel like there are parts of this that I'm okay with, but the elementary piece, I would want a really well-defined process that considers minority voices. I think those voices will be loud at the elementary level, and I want to make sure that there's a way that those voices are heard and that it's clear how it's, you can opt out. I know that there was, it touched on this, the memo, but I think I would almost need it more delineated so that I could give it to a parent and say, hey, this doesn't mean your kid has to have a Chromebook all day, or that you are going to have a really active, you know, voice in this process. Because it's hard, because the stated goal of the district is to go web to one right now, from K to twelve, and I'm not really there yet, and I think some parents aren't there yet. So that's where I'm hitting, I'm feeling this resistance to myself to this tech fee. So, because I'm not really sure if, once this is approved, it's just going to be like everyone's going to have this huge pressure to do this. There might be some kind of meeting, but I don't know how well it's going to incorporate different voices in the community. So those are my reservations around the tech fee.
Any response, Dr. Messenger?
I mean, I guess I have a pretty high level of confidence in our building principals and their teacher leadership within that, that they'll process it. We have differences now between our elementary schools because of how the families feel within that. And so BCSIS is a school that does not incorporate much technology, and down the hall in high peaks, we do. So, I mean, I guess I'm pretty confident that our schools do it. We certainly can work with them to delineate that, if that would be helpful to the board. Again, I think it's a school-level process, because I would like there to be variability between schools. This is not an expectation from the district or the district office that all schools go there. This simply allows, some schools are already there, and they've done it through other means to collect the funds to do this. And so those are school-based decisions. These are parent organizations that are organizing fundraising to buy the devices. And some of our schools simply don't have the capacity to do that, and others do, so.
Is there a way then that we could state somewhere, maybe this would make me feel better, something that says this is pure site-by-site decision-based, and there's no district expectation whatsoever to go one to web to one? So parents know that explicitly.
I think it was in the response, but we can highlight that.
No, but to put it in the fee thing, that this is going to be a totally autonomous decision at the site level. I mean, it would, it would just make me feel like this isn't going to just be totally pushed down.
We certainly could roll that out as part of the way they process it with their school communities. I mean, I probably would want to work with staff to put that together so it makes sense.
Kathy, then Jenny, then Shelley.
I just have a couple of questions. So I, I agree with what Shelley said and what Tina said. From what I'm hearing from the community in South Boulder is there hasn't been a lot of engagement around this issue, and there are a lot of questions. And I get that just leaving it up to the school is kind of where we are, but I think there's still too many questions that are unanswered. So I have, I have just a couple of questions. If we wait until June, which is Shelley's motion, does that jeopardize our ability to do anything in the fall?
Probably, yes. I mean, for a school, just to get them ordered and get them in place and get the training.
So what would be the date? Because you, we got this on consent agenda, and what would be the latest date that we could make a decision on the fee and still not jeopardize things going forward in the fall? I hope it's not tonight.
We, this is along with the fees, because it's a fee. That's the reason it's included in the agenda. We sent, communicated several weeks ago about this, that it was coming, to inform the board of this. So again, the decision, rather, of school and access, the way we've packaged this is a school-based decision. This, the board simply allows for the opportunity. So that would be processed school by school.
So if it's a high school, it's, only the freshmen would pay the incoming fee to get the Chromebook? Or does every class pay it and get a Chromebook?
So Andrew, would you comment on that, please?
President Fuqua, members of the board, and Dr. Messenger, I'm happy to answer that question. The one-for-one program is site-by-site, and it starts with the freshman class, and then it rolls to the next freshman class. So this fee would be forty-five dollars, starting with the freshman. And then the second year would be forty-five dollars for the freshman and sophomore, and then it would continue to roll. That allows us, you know, basically to cover the cost of the device over four years.
So we are committing not just to one-year fees, but to four years to cover the cost of the device? Because if for some reason the district or the school decides the next year not to cover it, then the district would be on the hook for the uncovered costs of the Chromebooks. Is that true?
I guess you could look at it that way, but there's a, there's a vetting process. So I think this goes to Board Member Marquess's comment. We can only take on two more schools next year. So if you approve the fee tonight, there's not going to be a flood of one-to-web schools. The main part of one-to-web is the professional development for the teachers, and we have a limited amount of staff that can do that. And so we would work with the high school principals. We wouldn't take on a middle school or an elementary school this coming year, and we would determine which two schools that we would go forward with. That could be Boulder High in Netherland, it could be Fairview and Netherland. It's not likely to be Monarch. We've been out talking with Jerry Anderson. She already has a BYOD program in place that has its own challenges, but it's working. And so that's not likely to be in this coming year. We've talked to Jerry, though, about future years and what the program can be. Once again, site-based, principal decision. Once the decision is made, that is when the ed tech team engages and community meetings are held. We've done this in two communities now, Centaurus and Broomfield, and the, the acceptance has just been wonderful. Lots of questions up front, some around student data privacy, but we've been through that, and we're not sensing any pushback in either of those communities. In fact, the principals of both those schools are here tonight, if there's more specific questions.
I just worry that, so I don't know that you really answered the question, though. So you are signing on to basically committing, at least for, I mean, I feel like once you start this process, you can't really pull it back, because the second year, either the district has to pay for the Chromebooks and the freshmen don't get them, or, so, I mean, once we start down that road, it's, we are asking our, our constituents to agree to this forty-five dollar fee, and they don't really get a say in that, because it's mandatory. So what if a parent doesn't want to pay it?
Yeah, so I'm sorry I didn't answer it on black and white. That is true. If the program were to start, and then the principal chose to stop the program, we would have Chromebooks out there that we did not recoup all the fees for. So that absolutely could happen. For those that can't pay, I think Dr. Messenger addressed that, we definitely will cover the free and reduced.
No, it's not can't, that don't want to.
So if they don't want to, it's, it's like any other fee, that if somebody doesn't want to pay, then we're going to have to figure out what that looks like. And, you know, that'll be probably a very small percentage, but we will figure that out and work through it. Part of it may also be they don't want to have, their student have the device. We haven't seen that yet in, in the two pilot schools, but it certainly could happen.
So if they collect this forty-five dollars per student, is there flexibility at the site level? They don't have to buy Chromebooks? They could, they could buy classroom Chromebooks, they could buy a classroom set? They would have flexibility in how they spent that money? Or they have to spend it on the Chromebook?
It is set up for the one-for-web program, and it's primarily that way because of all the PD that has to go in. The device is really the simple part of this. It's about the, the changing in the teaching and incorporating a tool that would be with the students, you know, in every one of their classes. And we are, we have that PD in place now for those two schools.
And Monarch has its own hybrid, so we're, at the end of this, we're going to have one high school that doesn't have any access to this?
No, they have access if, just like all the other schools, if they choose to go down that path.
But you said we can only do two this year, and there's three.
This year, yes.
And there's three out there.
That's correct. Actually, four, because you also have Netherland, Boulder, Fairview, and Monarch.
I thought we decided Monarch wasn't part of that, because they're the hybrid, so there's three that don't have.
Just Jerry wouldn't go this coming year. That's, that's what I'm saying.
And do you have an answer to how late, if we wanted to have that community engagement, we could go without jeopardizing the ability to go forward? These fees aren't going to come in, I mean, they'll come in when people start registering, which is coming up in a couple of weeks.
So we've had meetings with all the high school principals, and that has led up to this. And the, the feedback from the high school principals was that we would like to communicate something with our communities before school is out. And so if it doesn't happen tonight, it just means that communication would not happen. That does not preclude, though, a June approval of the fee. And then when we come back, the first thing is the communication. The first year in the one-to-web schools, they do not get the devices until the December-January timeframe. The reason for that is because we have a training program that the teachers, the freshman teachers, need to get through before we'll hand the devices out. So it's not like in August, the freshmen will get the devices. That, the program is not set up that way.
So we could conceivably have some community engagement over the next couple of weeks and not jeopardize this program?
I think that's a fair statement, yes.
Jenny?
So I think I got some of my questions answered. I just want to make sure, if we don't approve this fee, what happens to the one-to-web program at Broomfield High School?
So at both Broomfield and Centaurus, I had one-time money to run those programs for four years. So Centaurus would theoretically have two years left. Broomfield would have three years left. If the fee is approved, though, we will move down the path to enact those fees at those schools and to move forward. That frees up some money so that the technology can actually be purchased, because I have to purchase it upfront. I have to pay the entire hundred and ninety dollars upfront, so there's a pool of money I need to actually do that.
Right.
So a delay by a year actually shrinks some of that funding that I would have to jumpstart the program.
Right. And so I'm, I'm kind of curious with, I mean, so suppose we were to put this off, and this is just a question for staff and for the board, and we were, because I'm concerned, one of the concerns that was raised to me is that if, if we don't go forward with this tonight, then it's going to be hard for our principals to let the community, to communicate with the community about, about the fee and let them know that this is coming. For example, at Broomfield, which I think is kind of heavily, I mean, is, is very enthusiastic about this program, as far as I can tell. So if we, if we postpone it so we can do more community engagement, how do, how would that, what would that look like and how would we do that? Would be my, would be my question, because I don't want, I don't want to do something that keeps us from informing our community, should we decide to go forward.
I think part of our challenge is that the community involvement needs to be at the discretion of the principal. So I could see where you guys probably received some feedback based upon the article that was in the paper today, because that's broad. But our, our communication to engage the community happens from the principal once the decision is made. And then we have parent meetings, and we basically have an open discussion about what this would mean. Both Ginger and Rhonda at their schools, they had those meetings before we actually launched the one-for-web programs out there. I also want to add that the foundation of both these programs at Centaurus and Broomfield are based upon the four years, five years now, of the BYOD program at Monarch. We've developed a curriculum through that and the processes. So, so this has really been going on in the school district for five years now. We're just now looking for a way to fund it, to bring equity to our students so that every student is able to have the same learning experience through a digital means.
So let me make sure I understand you. So you're saying that we've already gone through through this community engagement process at the high schools where the One-to, when Web-to-One is in place. It's the going forward, and, and that we're not actually, and, and that you anticipate that if a school were to want to implement this fee, they would, they would have a community engagement process before you would agree to allow them to go forward with the Web-to-One, um?
That's ve- very well put. In fact, we would be engaged in that whole process. The ed tech team, um, who are teachers that are on my staff that do a lot of the training, they become integral in that community and, and the community meetings that happen. Um, you know, three schools are already there. Um, we didn't anticipate having just a broad community meeting to invite everybody in, because I think it's very targeted to the, um, the community. I think that, um, the concerns at the elementary school are absolutely, um, concerns of ours as well. Um, I don't see us going down that path immediately. There's much more work that needs to be done. Um, there's some thought that we will do the middle schools with fifth grade. So you get a Chromebook for a fifth grader. They have a fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth, and then they would get a new one, an updated one at high school. But we're still working out those, um, those details. The high schools are what we're, we've got the program solid, and we want to expand that.
It sounds like we're several years from anything beyond high school.
It certainly won't happen this coming year.
Okay. Well, that, I mean, that actually answers my questions, and, and I feel like I, I would need to support this fee based on my community, um, needs.
I think Shelley, you were next.
Yeah, I don't even know where to start, but, um, let me just say that I, I've never heard of a process where you make the decision first and then you ask for community input. Um, seems like that should be completely reversed. Um, can you say more, Andrew, about the curriculum you've developed using these Chromebooks?
So I will, um, call up, um, Kelly Sane if I can. Kelly is my ed tech director, and she is the one that is responsible for the curriculum and the training of the, the teachers. Um, is that okay?
Sure.
All right.
So I would encourage everyone to come tomorrow morning to see and talk to some of our students. Our students are a part of the panel and part of the discussion, um, at Broomfield, so you can actually listen to them through their lens and, and through that process. Really what this is, is it's just a tool. It's an opportunity for you to use a device when you need a device. Riley Judd, um, a student at, uh, Broomfield, did a fantastic job explaining this. She said, "When I'm doing some research and I have access to a digital tool, I then get access to more information, because I have links to, perhaps, they were discussing going to a different country." And so then I got to go into the Google Map and actually go and see the Eiffel Tower and go in and see it from a 3D version. I got to go in and, um, listen to the, um, information from these particular places that I'm going to. And it gives them a different rich experience that you would not have from just a traditional paper and pencil opportunity. But the most important part about this is balance. We are not asking, just because you have a digital device, means that you're on that device the entire time. In fact, when you listen to some of the conversations from our students, is that they've actually had more opportunity to talk face-to-face and do collaborative opportunities, and that's something that we talk about, is a really important balance, that it's not just, "I have a device and I'm on that device." And it's not a online learning program where you're just learning online. You're actually having a very opportunistic opportunity to visit with teachers, to visit with students, and to continue that collaboration, and get an opportunity to visit something that you might not have had, had you not had the opportunity to look at the device. So, yes, we do talk a lot about professional development, and we go through six months of professional development with our teachers before the device is even given to our, um, students, and we have a lot of opportunity for parent engagement, for survey results, for conversations, as well as continued survey results from our students and from our parents. And then, through that process, we continue to go back down and have conversations about what their professional development would look like, and they have, um, opportunities to work and collaborate together.
So you would say that, that this is potentially an integral part of the curriculum, once it's established in school?
I, I would say it's a tool, no different than a calculator is a tool to help enable, um, whatever you're learning. And calculator, obviously, for mathematics, but this is a broader tool that can be used across all of our, our different subjects.
Right. Well, we, I think everyone here knows the power of the internet and that, you know, how great it is and how we can all get information at the, you know, tips of our fingers, and I don't think there's anybody that questions that having access to the web is an important tool for learning. The question is, at what price, at what cost to our students' privacy, which is something that you're not talking about, and it's a huge issue. Google Sync is a nightmare for our kids' privacy, and we are not deactivating it, and other districts are. And I would like to understand, I, I got your response to that, about why we need to do it, but obviously other districts don't feel like they need to do it for that reason. So I want to understand why you think it's more important to give Google information about our kids than to keep their privacy rights intact and protect their futures.
So, um, let me just talk kind of high-level about data privacy. Um, I'm very happy that the, on the governor's desk is a student data privacy, uh, bill, because that gives us the foundation. It says the companies, big and small, Google and the, the locals here cannot sell data. They cannot target market. They have to destroy data when it's done. So the foundations are there. Um, I also want to focus in on the Google, um, uh, data privacy. It is, Google's data privacy policy is different for you with your Gmail account than it is for all of us at BVSD with a Gmail account or a, a Google backend. That's because we use Google, um, for education. And the data privacy, I think I've sent that to the board at one point, but I can resend it. It states in there that they will not take our, take the data and use it for any purposes, um, that I just explained.
That's what they say, Andrew.
They will use data to make their products better, but they take away all the personally identifiable data. Um, the Google Sync, the interesting thing about Google Sync, all it does is, for those students that are going from one device to another device, or from one browser to another browser, it saves your browsing, um, preferences. It saves them into the cloud. So if you log on with your BVSD account, actually, you guys have this as well, with your own BVSD accounts, and you log on to that computer there, and then you go home and you log on through a Chrome browser, it has all your preferences. When we share Chromebooks, which we do, uh, most of our schools share today, if we did not have that feature on, the personalization that the students do or that we each do, it would not be transferred from one device to the other. In fact, it would stay on the device they had. And if they didn't get that same device the next day, they would not see it. So we've, um, um, we've seen that as a benefit. Each student has the capability to shut it off, though, if they, if they would like.
And so...
That's a personal choice.
Right, and that's a choice that we should, if that's the case, and it is the case, we should be informing every single parent and every single student how to do that.
And we could do that. I think in the One-for-Web program when we roll out, I think in the FAQs, um, we, we could do that.
And we don't, we don't, we actually need to go beyond that, and we need to shut it off for all of them. If that's okay for one or two kids to do, that's okay for the district to do it for all of our kids. And this is the problem, and I know Bruce has said that, you know, several of our schools are already using these, and I understand that they are, and e- ever since this started happening, I've had concerns about data privacy, since the day I set foot on this board. That's right when you were doing Monarch's One-to-One program. And even then, we had parents that were upset about that, and that reached out to me on that. And it seems like we're just barreling through with this. And, you know, the last time you came before us and you talked about a potential One-to-Web program from kindergarten on up, you know, and we said, uh, you know, that might not be a good idea without talking to parents first about whether they want their kindergarteners to have, you know, Chromebooks. When that got out there, you wouldn't believe what I heard. Parents do not want their kindergarteners to have Chromebooks, and this makes it possible for them to have them. When one parent says, "I want that," and their kid has one, and the next thing you know, you know, it's just a domino effect. Every school's going to have these. Every kid's going to have these.
There's no plans for what you're describing.
Well, you're saying that this applies to elementary, middle, and high schools.
No, I'm saying is we need to develop the program yet at those levels.
Let's hear from Dr. Messenger.
So I'm going to ask Sam, if we could stay on the topic at hand, that is this fee. I think the issues being raised around privacy and the use of Google Sync and all that may be important issues to the majority of the board, but that's really not the issue before the board tonight. That the reality is, these very issues are going on today. We have thousands of, um, um, machines in the system that all of these things we were just discussing are going on, whether they're paid for with the fee or fundraising at Superior Elementary or the district's paying for them. So if we could segregate the issues, so we could focus on this issue tonight, that'd be my preference, if we could. Uh, and then if there's a desire of the board to come back and discuss these issues, and that may be in our data privacy work, then we should do that. Um, the reality is, schools are making these decisions today, uh, and this is not a different curriculum. It is the board-approved curriculum, as has been described. These are devices to access through the use. When I visit schools, kids are doing Google Docs, Google Spreadsheets. We have an educational, a Google educational environment. We've had it for a number of years. Our staff use it. Our staff teach with it. Um, so th- this ship has sailed. Uh, and the reality is, if we made a decision to pull that back, that would create significant concern and, um, take away the ability. I sat in a Spanish classroom yesterday, uh, at El Dorado K8. Students were giving voice samples of their speaking Spanish in conversation. The teacher was having them email those voice samples to her. She was capturing them then, so that she could go back and listen to them, uh, on her time to assess this. I mean, this is embedded in most of our environments, and so, um, I trust that Superior Elementary, when they raise the money to buy, uh, enough, um, machines to cover their whole school, these are conversations they had, because it was parent fundraising that did it. And so, uh, I guess, again, I trust the school communities to work through this. And, um, if you want to restrict this to high school only as a starting point, that's a caveat we could put on this. I think there'll be some pushback from our middle schools, but, uh, if, if that makes the board more comfortable to do that, um, but I think it's going to promote some increase. And Summit Middle School did this two years ago, uh, and we've visited with them, and they've had good success with it. And they took care of the issues that Richard raised earlier about families who couldn't or, uh, afford those. And so, um, there's dense saturation on the access to the machines in some of our schools, unless so in others. And we're simply trying to, um, you know, keep this moving forward. If this isn't the tool the board wants to use, then, then pull this item off, and we'll find other ways to, to fund these.
I appreciate your point about wanting to separate the issues, but if I heard Shelley correctly, I think, um, a concern that before the ship sails any further on these fees, uh, that we have a privacy policy in place. Does that, uh, summarize your motion?
No.
No?
I think there's lots of...
Sorry for misunderstanding there.
I mean, thank you for the attempt. I think that there are a lot of issues here, and the privacy policy is definitely one of the biggest ones. And, you know, I have no issue with kids using Chromebooks at school. We have stacks of them there. We have carts of them there. I have a problem with their personal information being shared with Google and whoever Google then shares it with. And when, if, if they could go on a Google Chromebook at school and they could not be personally identified, what they, what they churn out on that Chromebook, that if it's only for the teachers', you know, perusal, I would be fine with it. I am not anti-technology. I am anti-giving our kids' futures away, and I don't understand why this district would even consider doing that. And if, and the One-to-Web program is a direct route to doing that. If kids are walking around using it, shifting out of Google Apps, going to YouTube or any of the other things that you can go to when you leave Google Apps, and then they're being tracked by their IP address. They can get back to their birthdate. They can get back to almost any information that Google wants to get back to. I don't understand why the district would want to do that. I don't. I, nothing is worth it to me. No innovative app is worth it to me. There's nothing worth that. It's our job to protect these kids' privacy rights, and I don't think this program is worth it. I don't think that we're looking at the privacy issues, and I think doing this by fee is against policy and against statute, because clearly these kids are going to use this in core classes for the curriculum their teachers are teaching, and that is not allowed. So we have a policy issue. We have a privacy issue. We have a financial issue. I think this is a bad idea, and the minute you start giving parents, kindergarteners, a, a Chromebook, because the kid next to them has one, and so they want one, and then you have parents arguing with their kids about being on the computer at night, and the kid says, "Well, my teacher gave it to me." Who wants to get into those conversations with kids? We need to have community feedback on this. We should not be plowing through with this. And, you know, I, I think I'm being actually pretty flexible in saying that we should even reconsider in June, because I think it's a terrible idea.
Let's hear from some other board members. Tom?
So obviously, there's a lot the board needs to understand here. So, you know, I'm certainly in favor of postponing this. I mean, just from the conversations we've had, it's obvious there's a lot of unanswered questions, or perhaps areas that we haven't considered, the community hasn't considered, um, you know, what are unintended consequences? Data privacy is a big one. I, I do believe it is linked, Dr. Messenger, because we're buying Chromebooks with this, and there is data privacy issue with Chromebooks. In fact, anything you put out on the web, on the internet, that data is a privacy, um, liability. Um, our own classified systems, uh, OPM, were, were hacked into by foreign governments. My personal information on security clearances, that's the highest level of security in our nation for computers, was compromised. So my data, all about me is all over the world now. And so this district and Google's not going to do any better with that. But that's another conversation we need to talk about with data privacy. What my concerns here are, is that, from what Dr. Messenger just described, how this is becoming embedded in our instructional day, um, and the way our fees are structured, both policy and law, is that we can't charge for that. And here we have, uh, uh, charging basically a participation fee for people who don't want to participate, probably, and it's mandatory. If I didn't want my son or daughter to use the Chromebook, I don't want one. I still got to pay the fee. Right? I, I don't think that, that belongs in this fee policy. I think we're really opening ourselves up for issues, or we're double-talking the square way around the legal aspects. So I think that needs to be studied a lot harder. I've read what's been put out there, and I don't agree with it. I think we need to look hard at whether this fee is even an appropriate legal fee to, to do. I mean, the words I've heard tonight, I would say, "No, it falls into that, that instructional day, just like a textbook does." So, um, for that reason alone, I think we really need to look very hard into this. And I, and I also think that, that since it's part and parcel with the data policy, which we're going to be talking about, that it would behoove us to get through that a little bit before we take the next step to it ourselves. So, you know, that, that's why I think, uh, that may not even be a good idea, period. Uh, but certainly we need to postpone it and learn more about it as a board. I think we're, be irresponsible not to do so.
Richard?
I want to go back to the equity issue that, or the equity question that you, uh, mentioned a little while ago. Uh, so, let me understand this. The Chromebook is a device that kids can use anyplace?
Yes. So Dr. Messenger, right now, has a Chromebook right next to you.
Right.
That thing that looks like a laptop. All a Chromebook is, is a, is a device that is a web browser. So you don't install software on it. It's, you access anything through the web.
So here's my equity question.
Okay.
So a little Juanito that lives in Lafayette Gardens.
Yes.
Doesn't have access to the web. How is that fixed?
So we, um, so that's called the digital equity and equity at home. In Lafayette, um, we are starting a program called ConnectMe. ConnectMe is connect my education. We're partnering with CU. Um, there's a student that graduated from Centaurus High School, and he is working with us and with the city of Lafayette to go door-to-door for those, um, homes that don't have internet, and to get either Comcast or CenturyLink's 995 internet installed, and then working in partnership to have the city help pay for that. Um, so that program is just launching. Um, next year we will, um, go forward. But what really happens for those students is, they either go to their friends' homes, they go to Starbucks, they go to, you know, businesses that have it, and, um, the library, uh, the schools. So all the schools after school, um, have Wi-Fi, of course, and, um, get access that way.
So it doesn't address the equity issue in terms of home?
Well, the ConnectMe program...
Being connected to the home, yeah.
Is for that.
Right. Because, because it seems to me like it's not fair for Juanito that lives in Lafayette Gardens to have to go to Starbucks and get connected when other kids don't have to do that. They can just stay at home and get connected.
I absolutely agree.
And then, and then the other piece, uh, I know that many of the families that I know in Lafayette also know about the, uh, the, uh, discounted fee, uh, and even 995 a month is a little bit too much for them to handle anyway. So, so I, that, that's what I'm getting to in terms of the equity issue as it relates to, uh, the, uh, getting kids connected to the web at home, if, you know. And if they're issued an assignment or something like that, and they have to, uh, do the homework at home using their Chromebooks, but they don't have no way to do it, then, then it doesn't get done.
Right. And this, this is, uh, happening today. It's happening all over our district. Um, I think we have a little over twelve thousand... I think we have a little over 12,000 Chromebooks deployed right now. And so, I mean, it's happening. I think Dr. Messenger encapsulated that very well. So we're working on the connection challenge as well. The FCC did just pass a rule that allows lifeline money to also be married up. In theory, come January 1st, for many families, it will be 70 cents a month to get Comcast or CenturyLink Internet.
And will that happen by August of this year?
No. The FCC ruling, I believe, goes into place January 1st, 2017.
So the connection to the web at the home, will that happen by August of this year?
No. No, legally, it can't happen until January.
So we still have that issue?
The reality is, I guess I just want to reinforce what Andrew's saying. This digital divide, this lack of access outside of the school, is happening today, and we're working on that. But the reality is, if they don't also have a device, that means they don't have access in school, and they don't have access when they go home either. So, and this is our attempt to create greater access where they have Wi-Fi in the school building, because we've made the investment to have robust Wi-Fi throughout the school. In a better world, they would be everywhere they go, and we're working on that. And, you know, other school districts across the country are doing the same. This is a big issue. However, we're not going to take the computers away from all the kids to level the playing field. The reality is, students have access at school, they have access at home, some families can afford the devices, and so on and on. These are really inexpensive devices to give a greater level of access, and we need to continue to work on this access outside of the school. But if we don't do this, that problem's still there tomorrow. I mean, it's true in every one of our schools because of our neighborhoods that don't have Wi-Fi. And as you know, in North Boulder, we lit up a neighborhood a year ago to address this very issue, and we are having conversations with all of our communities on this. We're very committed, our foundation is very committed to working with this on this, as are municipal governments, which I'm thrilled that the city of Lafayette is working with Andrew and the team to try to figure this out.
Kathy?
I read about that Connect Me program, and that's really exciting work, so I hold out great hope that we can solve that. I see that as a separate issue from what we're talking about right now. I just, I just have a couple of things. Is that what I'm, I'm not opposed to the fee in general. What I'm struggling with is that I don't want the community in South Boulder to oppose it because they don't understand it, and they come up with reasons that they don't want to pay, they don't want to engage, they want to do that because they didn't feel like they were involved in the decision. And so I don't want to jeopardize being able to do it, but I also want to involve that community in having this discussion. And what I was hearing today from those parents was, what's this? What's going on? They need to know more, and I didn't have all the answers. It's not particularly helpful that we're not getting our tour until tomorrow after we were supposed to decide tonight, but I know schedules are tight at the end of the year. So I, the reason that I wanted to postpone it was to have that community engagement process, because I think it's more helpful if, even if, and we know how this happens. I mean, we'll offer to have it, and five parents will show up, but maybe more will show up, and they'll spread the word. That's what I'm hoping for, is that, that level of understanding, because people thought that juniors and seniors were paying for these, and if they weren't getting them, there's a lot of confusion out there. And so if we, and I don't know that we can ameliorate that by saying this is a school-by-school thing. I think we can ameliorate some of that by having those conversations immediately and then going forward. And I just have one other question. What if all three remaining high schools say they're in?
I'll look to Kelly, and we will have a conversation, and we will try to figure it out. I don't want to commit to more than two right now, because we kind of know our trajectory. But if they all wanted to go in, you know?
And I think we just need to be clear, because what I'm hearing is, this is being described as a technology fee, so that you can do what you want with the technology. That's not what this is.
No, no.
So I think, so that's what I mean about the misunderstandings. And so I just think, to the extent that we can have that conversation, and it doesn't need, it's a small community, because we're not trying to put it in the middle schools or the elementary schools right now, and I get that. So I was just hoping for a short delay to be able to have those conversations, because people felt like they hadn't been included, and then it shows up on the front page of the Daily Camera, and people are like, what's going on? So...
We weren't expecting that either. I mean, the calls came in from the paper. They read the agenda, of course. But let me just be real clear. I know that, it sounds like I may have confused things. We don't not involve the community before the decision is made. The decision is, the community is involved as part of the decision-making process for that community. So we wouldn't go out as a district and try to have that community discussion with every school and community. We just, that wouldn't be practical. So we work with the principals when they're ready, and then they bring in their community for the discussion. Through that discussion, the decision is made to either go forward or not go forward. And certainly, as Broomfield High did as our second Wonder Web school, we spoke to Ginger, and we had that conversation going. And then we had a parent meeting, and more than five parents showed up. Actually, it was a, it was a well-attended meeting, and it was a wonderful dialogue. And then out of that, the decision was made to move forward. So I probably confused things a little bit there, and I apologize for that.
No, I just, that process, the sense I got was that people were feeling excluded by it, because if we vote tonight, I just think, like I said, I don't think we can ameliorate that by saying, "We vote for it, and now we're going to have the discussion with you about whether we're going to implement it." So I just feel like if we could say, let's tell the principal, it's one school we're talking about, and the parents that were contacting me during the day, we're going to have this meeting, we're going to make that decision, you know? And we could actually answer these...
Are you talking about Fairview?
Yeah.
Yes.
They're not interested.
And Dawn has been in the loop the whole way.
They're not present.
That's not what I'm hearing. What I'm hearing is that there's some confusion about what this involves, and so parents want to know what this involves, and some of the teachers are curious, too. So they're not saying we don't want it, they're saying we need more information.
And they're not prepared to come forward. That's not a school community that's ready to proceed with this. And so, but with if and when they ever are, it would be available to them. So what we can do instead is segregate this off, that's my suggestion. Pull it off, get the other fees approved, let management go back and put a proposal back before the board. Because the other option is to get a community organized, then have them come to the board and say, "We need a $45 fee," or whatever. So that way, we know they're involved, but then that kind of puts the board back up against the wall as well, to say they went out and educated their community and convinced them they want to do it. We don't have any way to offer them to do it right now. We don't have the resources if a school's ready to do it. And so we were simply trying to say, in the event that you're ready to do it, that this is an option for you to do it. But, because I don't want to go out and get a community excited about doing it, and have them ready to go, and they look around and say, "And how would we pay for it?" And we'd say, "Well, you're going to need to petition the board to allow you to have a fee to do that." I mean, that's another way we could do it. And I'm, so let us back away from this. Let us work on it, Sam. I would suggest that we approve the other fees and move forward, segregate this off, let us go back and work with our leadership team, and we'll come back with some strategies. I don't think there's great value of having community hearings on this, because what Andrew's described several times tonight is the process we go through, school, community by school, community. And so I don't think a community engagement session like we might traditionally do, where a dozen parents come in and oppose something that would block it for thousands of kids. So I'd rather work it through school, community by school, community. But I think for tonight, I'd suggest we segregate this off and proceed with the other fees.
Yeah, and I don't think anybody was objecting to the other fees. Can you remind us of the motion?
Wait, can I say something?
Yeah, sure, Shelley. But I want to hear what your motion was, unless you're going to withdraw it.
No.
The way I have it, motion to postpone action on the tech fee until June, until a privacy policy is in place, and we have heard from the community.
Shelley?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that any sort of community discussion, whether it's at the school level or at a broader level, needs to include a discussion of what happens to this data. I guarantee you, parents will not be falling all over themselves to get these Chromebooks when they understand what's happening with their kids' data. And I actually think that it has literally taken me weeks to get up to speed on this, spending hours a day understanding this. I don't think our principals have time to do that. They want to do what's right for our kids, of course they do. They don't have time to understand what's happening to this data, and they need to understand that, too, before they promote it to the kids in their school and to the parents in their school. The district needs to do an absolutely transparent job of explaining what happens to the data when their kids are on these Chromebooks. And I don't even just mean, I don't even mean, like, you know, their test scores go somewhere, which is bad enough. There are algorithms built into the keyboard where people can detect emotional states of the kids that are typing on these, and that data is collected and mined. And parents need to understand that, teachers need to understand that, and administrators need to understand that, or these will not be legitimate community meetings.
So tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM at Broomfield High, I think we've got a tour set up, and I think most of you have RSVP'd, and I would encourage you to just be open-minded as Ginger takes us on a tour and, you know, can help with the understanding of the entire program.
All right. Kathy has an additional question.
The equity issue I'm hearing is that the kids on the free and reduced lunch have the Chromebooks, and the other kids have their MacBook Airs. Are they, so what I'm asking is, will you be required to use a Chromebook in class, or can you bring your own personal computer? Because when I say equity, that's, you're smiling like you may have heard that. I don't know how you solve that. I just don't know what they're, what, how you...
No, it's a one...
And I don't think you can even address that, but maybe you can.
Yeah, no, I can't address it definitively. There's all kinds of levels of equity, and one could say if I have a MacBook Pro, that's better than a Chromebook, but I'll just look to Dr. Messenger, who has been using a Chromebook for his main device for some time.
Andrew will figure it out one of these days.
Yeah. I think, I think there's some old paradigms about a Chromebook. The original Chromebooks, four years old, were kind of cheap-feeling. The Chromebooks today are just like a MacBook Pro, or like a Dell or HP computer. And we'll show them, we'll have them with us tomorrow, so it's a different, different thing. I often ask the question, what are you doing on your device that is outside of the browser? And if your answer is, "Well, I'm not doing anything outside the browser," then a Chromebook is a perfect digital device for you.
And I just want to push back a little, Dr. Messenger. I'm not hearing from the parents who talked to me that they're against this in Fairview. They just wanted, like, to hear an answer like that that I couldn't give them, which is, I didn't know that. So I just think the information piece is, is all that's missing, and I don't want to make it too big a hurdle. That wasn't my intent at all. It was more just trying to get more information out when we didn't have it, that's all.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your work on this.
You're welcome. And by the way, on the Fairview discussion, Kelly and I had a meeting scheduled to be out there tomorrow afternoon with their tech team, so we're looking forward to that as well.
Tina?
To that point, I was going to ask, why isn't Fairview interested, just out of curiosity?
Well, schools are all in different places. Yeah, I mean, they're just in different places. So, I mean, they process them, and Monarch was out there five years ago, and other schools just weren't there yet. Centaurus went two years ago, and Bramfield might this year. I mean, they're just in different places.
So Shelley's motion would separate out the tech fees, and then obviously, we can return with a motion to approve the others, providing time for development of a staff response to the board's interest in community engagement, and also, we are developing the privacy policy already. So I think, unless there's any other comments, we're ready to vote on the motion. Kathy?
I just have a procedural question.
Yeah.
I'm still not very good at this.
Sure.
So if we wanted a motion that reflected what Dr. Messenger suggested we do, we wait till Shelley's motion is called, and then we make an alternative motion? Because I didn't think her motion reflected what Dr. Messenger was suggesting that we do. His wasn't tied to doing the privacy policy, it was just to withdraw this and to have staff get back to us.
That's true.
And I would be comfortable with that. I don't want to tie this up with discussions around the privacy policies. I think the legislature's taking this forward, and I don't want to be the reason that these schools that want to go forward can't go forward. So I'm just asking procedurally how we would do that.
Yeah, I think we would, that would be a different motion, I think.
Sure.
Unless Shelley is interested in removing the privacy policy piece from her motion.
Well, I don't really understand your concern, Kathy. Could you, are you afraid the privacy policy will take too long?
And I think it goes on a separate path. I think this is a discussion that we're just trying to get clarity around what this fee will do and what the expectations are around the fee. And my sense from Dr. Messenger was that he would, we would withdraw this, have further conversation, and come back on that, and the privacy policy would not be tied to this motion. And so that's all I was looking for. So I think it's a separate motion.
Any other questions, Shelley?
Well, what's your proposal, Bruce?
So what, to what you're saying, Kathy, I would recommend the board vote down this motion, and then propose an alternate motion just to segregate, pull off the tech fee, and just let it, pull it out. And then let staff come back with another proposal around timing and process around the tech fee. So don't, don't tie it to something else. Just pull it off, and it'll just be out of the mix. And then let us come back with a separate proposal about how to process this. But I don't think you need to give us direction on tonight, tonight on that. We'll just, we heard you. Pull it off, segregate it out. But I concur with what Kathy's saying. I think the motion on the table complicates this for us. I would just recommend that you vote that down, since it's already been moved and seconded, and that somebody might consider a motion to say, "Let's just remove the tech fee from consideration tonight." And if there's a majority that support that, then vote on the fees without the tech fee included, and then we'll consider an alternate strategy to bring this back to the board.
So, but this strategy, it seemed to me earlier, you were saying the strategy did not involve a tech fee, but now you're saying it will involve a tech fee. So what will be different when you bring it back?
Well, I haven't developed it yet, so I don't know.
But it will be a tech fee?
Well, it may not be.
Okay. So there's potential for you to come with a completely different idea?
I think I will pursue all means, you bet. But I just, I agree with Kathy. I think tying it to the privacy is not the right thing to do on this issue. So, as I said earlier, they're two related but different issues. So that'd be my recommendation.
So I would just say, unless there's a privacy policy in place, I would not vote for this. I do think that they're linked. We need to get the privacy policy in place before we approve this, because it is, they are directly related. And I don't see, now that the state has a law, or almost a law, as soon as Hickenlooper signs it, DAC has given us our input, we've had the draft policy for a while, I don't see that it will take long to get that, that policy in place. Probably, we could do that by the next board meeting. So this isn't a long-drawn-out process with the, with the privacy policy, and they are very much related.
Any other comments, board members? If not, Laura, will you call the vote on the motion?
The motion we're voting on is a motion to postpone action on the tech fee until June, until a privacy policy is in place, and we have heard from the community. Belval?
No.
Benford? Fuqua?
No.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
No.
Marquess?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Motion fails.
I would entertain a motion to just remove the tech fee from the other fee approvals and vote on the remaining fees and adjustments included in item 8.8.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? If not, Laura, would you?
I have a quick question for Dr. Messenger. Will this, if, would we still be able to proceed in the fall, do you think, with this motion?
Yeah, I mean, let, give us some time and see how best to proceed. So, I mean, I wouldn't say that wouldn't be possible, but I also don't want to commit to, let us have some time to...
Fair enough, but I just was, like I said, I wasn't intending to slow this whole[1675.16] Fair enough, but I just was, like I said, I wasn't intending to slow this whole thing down.
We need some time to strategize.
Okay.
Okay.
We're voting on a motion to remove the tech fee from the other fees and adjustments.
Yeah, I believe we were also then, can we approve the remaining tech fees in the same motion?
Okay. And otherwise approve?
The remaining fees.
That's right. What's the motion?
Just to remove the tech fee. And not wait for another proposal to come back.
Wait, are we going to approve? The motion is to approve every-
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's implied that they'll come back and move that. So I don't want to complicate the motion. So it's just a motion to remove the tech fee from the list of fees.
And then we will have to subsequent-
And approve the rest.
Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you. Do you want to restate that, Laura? I apologize.
I shall. Okay, the motion on the table is to remove the tech fee from the list of other fees and adjustments and approve those remaining fees.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, Laura, could you call the roll on that, call the vote on that?
Belval?
Yes.
Benford?
Yes.
Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gabhart?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And Shelley, I'm very sympathetic to your views on privacy, but I thought this was the proper procedural way to do it. Next item is a study item on student data privacy. Dr. Messenger?
So if you go to, if you would please, on study items 10.1, what you'll find there is a draft student data privacy policy. It's an attachment. And so, this is the most recent version that you have seen. And so, you've received some input from DAC since we last discussed this. You also have all but watched our legislature and governor enact a new data privacy, waiting the governor's signature. So we bring this back to you upon your request for further discussion or guidance as we go forward. I would just say this has been vetted through our normal process with Cabinet, BVA leadership, which is what we do with the most policies. So it's kind of back in the board's court on how we might proceed as a study item.
All right, and thank you. And I don't usually start, but let me ask you, Dr. Messenger, have you and staff reviewed the DAC recommendations?
We have. And so, you know, we don't see anything inconsistent in this policy with regard to those. That doesn't say there couldn't be things added here or in regulation that would be responsive to that. This process kind of unfolded on top of itself. So I would ask Melissa if she has any comment around anything from the DAC proposal that you would see that might be inconsistent. And I don't want to put you on the spot, because I know this has come out just recently. But if that's what you're asking, Sam, is the consideration of the DAC-
Because it's just speaking as one board member, all those recommendations sounded very reasonable to me.
A lot of information that came out tonight.
Right. I mean, it was my impression, reading through the DAC memo and the presentation tonight, that it really wasn't suggesting so much changing the policy, but in terms of how do we implement the policy and raise awareness, the transparency element to that, you know, some suggestions around making sure staff understand the policy and the importance of it, and having a training program. So that, so I really didn't take much from this in terms of actual language changes for the agreement.
Thank you.
Well, I could maybe, Sam, on that point, just while Melissa's there, I mean, a consideration, I'm not suggesting that you're ready to tell us to bring this back for action in two weeks, but if you direct us to, we will, or changes. I mean, one of the things that we could do when the policy is enacted is to put together both a communication plan, an action plan of, to, I think that's what I hear Melissa saying, that it's responsive. I mean, you might not want to embrace everything DAC said, but we could certainly develop a plan that's responsive to that for your consideration. I mean, it would probably be more of administrative in nature. But if that would, would one, show DAC our responsiveness to that, and would give you some comfort that we've got a plan going forward for the, I would just say, the implementation of the policy. So if the language really isn't, the suggestions really don't alter the language of the policy so much as how it gets implemented. And I don't know that even all needs to be in regulation. I mean, some of it might be. But some of it might be what you, we would do initially to implement it, and then how we would maintain the policy with new employees or new technologies, those kinds of things. So, I mean, I don't want to commit staff tonight to do that, but I think that'd be something that we could certainly tackle. We've not done that yet, but we certainly could.
And obviously, it will have to be in alignment with whatever, assuming the governor signs the-
Correct.
-data privacy bill. Board members, questions, comments? Tina?
Yeah, has this substantially changed since we last reviewed it?
The same draft.
It's the same one, right? Okay. Because I think, I guess I'll just make the same comments as I did last time. So I'm still a little bit uncomfortable with the language under... "Vendors may not use student data for advertising, marketing, or research unless the district, without the district's consent." I would love to have a linkage to parents there somehow. So I don't want to have the district to have full authority to use student data for advertising or marketing. And I think that's probably accomplished under FERPA somehow. But the way it reads is really uncomfortable with me that the district one day could sell student data for advertising, or may use student data for advertising or marketing. So if there's a way to accomplish that, that would be great. Or if there's a way to cite a law that shows how parents ultimately would have to give consent as well. Or if there's a way to say that that won't be a practice of the district, that we're not going to do that. It's that commercial purpose that has, that I'm concerned about. The other piece is, as I mentioned when DAC was presenting, I still think the second bullet point under the list of approved vendors and applications is in conflict with policy IJ. And I still believe that applications generally would fall under the umbrella of a learning material. And I noticed that IJ isn't referenced in this policy. So I'm wondering if we can make a nod to that, because there's, and/or talk about IJ, because I feel like there's, that something about IJ kind of makes it feel like teachers can't just go pick out apps, and this one, or learning materials, without some kind of vetting process. So we do have one bullet that provides for a vetting process. The other one, where the only vetting process is just whether or not student data is shared, but doesn't speak to the instructional legitimacy of that material. So again, I want, as the DAC member said, I would like to have innovation, but at the same time, we need to still maintain true to some instructional expectations that we have around our learning materials. So those are, I think, the two main comments I made last time. I don't have any notes. I'm just trying to recall here, so it's a little tricky. But those would be my primary issues with this that I can think of off the top of my head.
And I think if we're going to make suggestions, we all will do that, but the staff is going to need some sense of consensus on what the board would like incorporated. So I'm not sure what the best way to do that is, for another version to come back to us, incorporating different individual board member suggestions, and then we review that? Or we want to try to discuss each proposed change and see if there's consensus of the board? Tom?
So we had a work session on this several months back. And we all made a lot of comments, and so none of that appeared here. So I felt like I wasted my time at that meeting. I didn't keep my comments of my, copy my red line, so I'm going to have to go back and redo that. So I think we're going to have to have another work session to do that. I mean, unfortunately, none of those got captured, and unless somebody has a record, and maybe Tina still has her notes. I don't have my notes. But that is a waste of our time if we have a work session and then we don't do anything with it like that. And I just really feel bad that we wasted our time in a work session, gave a lot of comments, spent hour and a half or something, and then none of that gets recorded anywhere.
My general sense is that's reflected in this policy, but if there are various-
This hasn't changed since then. This is the same thing we got back then. There's none of those comments that were incorporated.
It's the same version we saw in the board meeting, not in the work session. So if there are areas-
Where's the version we saw in the work session?
There are areas that the board wants changed. If you'll send it to us, we'll consider those. And so Tina gave us some specific guidance on that. We'd be glad to do that. If there are other areas tonight or after the meeting, we'd be glad to consider that.
Is your preference to receive those in writing from?
It is easier for us to do that. And I think, Sam, just because of the lateness of the hour, that, you know, what we could do, I mean, for example, Tina's, would be pretty easy just to do a red line that says, "We could modify this marketing piece by stating it this way." You know, backs it down or, I mean, then you could see the old language in the new. So if there are other suggestions like that tonight, we, Melissa's making notes of those. If you are tired, and you want to look at this, and send us a note electronically, I'd just ask you to probably do it sooner than later, because then we can get it incorporated. And again, what I'd probably do is do present language of this draft, plus whatever is being suggested. Then we could, you know, and if we want to identify the source, it's easier to refer, say, "This is Tina's suggestion. This is Tom's suggestion." Then, you know, then each of you could speak to those as we get back. I didn't hear anything in Tina's suggestions tonight that were probably particularly problematic. But again, rather than to assume everybody's there, let us just set them side by side, and then you can give us guidance.
True.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, Tina, are you okay to email your suggestions?
Well, I think, didn't Melissa just take notes?
Oh, did she take them down? Okay.
Or should I email them?
Well, I wrote down.
Okay.
I, if, I think we're good then.
All right. Tom?
I'm just unclear. Is this a different version than we had in the work study, the work session?
Slightly.
Slightly. What has changed?
Well, I don't recall exactly. I know one issue that you had raised was around ownership of the data.
Yeah, I don't see that here.
Around parents, and I did change that for that definition of student data, information in which students and parents have a privacy interest.
You still, I still don't see anything about ownership. I can make some comments on ownership.
I mean, the issue is around the FERPA protections that we, when we contract with vendors, we have to maintain ownership of the information when we're contracting with vendors on behalf of any kind of privacy rights the family and the student might have. So I tried to capture that we're acknowledging a privacy interest that the district and the family has.
Okay, so let me take some time to consider. I suggest we all do that, send in the comments, and then have another study session on this one, so those are all put in the document.
Everybody comfortable with that? Shelley?
The last time this came up, I made extensive comments and never got any feedback. And I think the, the reason I didn't was because there was a sense from the, from the district that, like, there was no consensus on those. But there was no opportunity to get consensus on those. So those are, you know, lost. I can probably resurrect them. But I want to take this policy and go through HB 1423 and make sure that we're in compliance. And I want to add things that I think that maybe where HB 1423 doesn't cover it, and add those things in as well. So, so my question is, what will be the process after that happens? We're all making our changes. I mean, what's the process for agreeing to each other's changes, or?
Yeah, I think we are going to have to bring it back. And I'm assuming, Melissa, assuming the bill is signed, that you would incorporate anything from that new state law into this policy? Or would it just be saying in this, we must comply with state law?
I would make is the legislation would take effect August 10th, if it's signed. CDE is supposed to prepare a draft or sample model policy for all school districts to use if they want. That would be due next March, and then school districts would need to implement the policy by the end of 2017. So, I mean, our conversations have generally been around, "Let's get something in place." That seems to be what the board wants, knowing that we're going to need to revisit this, you know, next spring, when the CDE policy comes out.
Shelley?
I don't think the governor's going to change this. I think he's probably just going to sign it. So we know what the, we know what the state policy is now. There's no reason we have to wait till March or next August to implement that and be consistent with the state's policy. So can you just go ahead?
So I would suggest board members forward their individual suggestions to the superintendent. We'll work with Melissa and bring back, I think, a document that references the current one, the one we're seeing tonight, and the proposed additions or corrections.
We'll bring this back to board leadership in June with agenda setting to figure out, I mean, if we are going to have a work session or if we, you know, how we want to do that. So we'll probably need some guidance on that. But give us our input first, and then we'll see what the volume of that is and the kind of setting we need to create. We may need to, you know, we, we don't have a lot of time scheduled for those kinds of sessions, but we could schedule a special meeting and do it.
Okay. Yes, Tom?
So this draft here references- Policy JRA/JRC, which I don't think exists.
Right.
And so that policy would need to be approved before we could reference it here.
So we presented both policies to you last time, and so our commitment was to bring them back. If you want to walk them parallel, we can do that too. But that's, you've seen that policy, and we just didn't bring it back tonight. But we can bring them, they're companion pieces, so we can certainly do that.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I think we left it that Tina and Shelley were going to be working on that with their proposals.
Some suggestions there. We would appreciate those as well.
Thank you. All right, so we see the path forward. Please forward your suggestions to the superintendent, and we will work to schedule a follow-up session on this in our, in our busy calendar. Next item, final item, is agenda setting. Board members, any, yes, Kathy?
I apologize if this has already been set out there, but I was wondering when we'd get the next update on the bond and a presentation from Dawn. I didn't remember seeing that that was coming up soon.
Dawn, do you know if we scheduled with Susan the bond update from staff? We had the CBAC tonight. Do you know if we've scheduled the date for the bond update for the board?
Whenever the board desires it, we're ready to-
We could bring, we had, we-
How about now, Tom? It's a joke, sorry.
He could probably do it.
Attempt at humor at 9:25.
One of the things we've talked about is also, I mean, you obviously see quite a bit of written information prior to the CBAC report tonight that wasn't even addressed in the CBAC report regarding the work. And so, you know, we think as we go into summer break, some of this might be better served in writing, just because we're running out of meeting time. So let's, I'll work back with our bond planning team. We meet each week about what we might be able to capture in writing that will be helpful to you. And then, not that we don't want to have a face-to-face, we're just running out of meeting time before summer break. And so, but we'll go back and look at that, Kathy.
I was just thinking that there'll be a lot of activity this summer, so you're right, there might be.
There's a lot of activity.
I think, but being able to follow that to the extent that we can, I think would be really helpful.
So I'd encourage you to go to the homepage, click on bond, go there. Susan Cousins, of course, is a communications specialist, does a great job of continuing to update that. So don't hesitate to do that as well. But we'll look at a formal report as well. Okay.
Shelley?
Yeah, I would like to, I sent an email about this. I'd like to put policy BEDH on the planning agenda for June, or whatever it is, revise that. And also, I'd like to revisit the idea and recommend again that the district have a data privacy advisory committee made up of people who are concerned with this issue and experts in this area. We have many in Boulder. And that we set that up sometime in the fall to keep track of the ongoing changes in this area, because they're constant, it's constantly changing, moving target. So.
Okay. We'll put that in, perhaps we can talk about that also at the June meeting. Anything else, board members? If not, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.